Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm going to call the July 6th City Council meeting to order. Again, before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge that we are still using our remote meeting format. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meetings, from being conducted in person. The prohibition has been extended through July 7th. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone, listen live to the meeting, or make comments. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. For those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called under the Audience Comments portion of the meeting. If there's anyone on the call who did not sign up but would like to make comments tonight, please press *3 on your phone, and we will be able to add you to the speakers list. At this point in time, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. That's seven of seven council members in attendance this evening. There are also some city staff participating in tonight's meeting, including City Administrator Bob Kowits, Assistant to the City Administrator Autumn Monahan, Senior Engineer Matt Ellis, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, City Attorney Jim Haney, City Clerk Tina Eggers, and Deputy City Clerk Tisha Ghezir. There may also be some other staff in attendance this evening. For the meeting guidelines, I'd like to reiterate some guidance. For all meeting attendees, please be clearly and pause frequently, state your name each time before speaking, and mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat, indicate when you would wish to speak, please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second emotion, or participate in debate. That's a little reminder to the mayor herself to turn on the chat features so she knows how to recognize somebody when they're ready to chime in. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all keep your microphones muted, I do welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is Audience Comments, and here are some guidelines for providing those comments. Please direct your comments to the whole of the council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone, and *6 may be an option on your phone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please re-mute your microphone when you're done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Again, for those who have joined us tonight and would like to speak but did not sign up in advance, please press *3 on your phone, and we will call the first six digits of your phone number when it is your turn to make comments. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If the speaker is out of order, I will have to ask them to stop and to mute their microphone. If the speaker does not comply, I may direct staff to mute their microphone, and if the disruption to the meeting continues to occur and order cannot be restored, I may direct staff to remove you from the call. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. City Council and your mayor takes these comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address those. I'm going to ask the city clerk to please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening.
Certainly, Donna Robinson.
Thank you, Donna.
And Donna, if you can unmute on your end, you have the floor.
Good evening. This is Donna Robinson, and I had asked to speak to the council. Unfortunately, I thought we would be at the end after you covered some of the business, so I'm not sure how relevant this is because I wasn't sure if you were actually covering this point this evening or not. My biggest concern, when I saw an initial listing of what codes and things that were going to be discussed, had to do with permeable versus impervious, sorry, pervious versus impervious decisions. I spoke at a council meeting, actually, it was almost two years ago now, specifically on this topic, when the code was being addressed, and the example that was given was schools, that it would allow the schools to cover a little more space or ground. We're talking about a change of adding it, increasing it to 95% instead of the 50-50%, at least that residents are required. And so I just wanted to express my concern, this feels like, and as I said, I haven't heard the discussion of the council yet, nor have I actually seen all of the documentation because I think there was a note about it being discussed after the storm drainage portion of the work was done. But I just want to stress again that it feels like it's much too general language that I've been seeing. The language was not specific to schools last time, it was a general language, but it didn't seem to be clear when it was presented to the council. In fact, there were a couple of council members that commented after I spoke that they did not realize that it was only for schools and that it was for general purposes of the city to determine whenever it was valid. And so once again, I just want to really stress that I don't think it's a good idea. I think we have a lot of water around here, especially when the waters get high, like in February, and I would really be interested in having it if, in fact, it's a benefit to somebody, a business, or a resident, or the city in town, especially in downtown, that the code be very much narrowed and not general language to be used at somebody's discretion. That was what I was concerned about, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next on our list is Mike Kern. I'm muting you, you can do so on your line as well, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Well, it's been an interesting year, to say the least, especially these last couple of weeks have been quite saddening and interesting. This last weekend, six young children were murdered in our nation. All of them were black. All of the people who shot them are black. How do Black Lives Matter matter if blacks are senselessly murdering their own? Last weekend alone, Chicago had 67 people shot. 14 of them died. All who died were black. All who were shot were black. And all who did the shooting were black. What sense does this make? In almost every large city in our nation, violent crime is up over 200% this year compared to the same time period last year. Why? People are taking advantage of the rioting that started from George Floyd's murder. Yes, his murder was not justified, and a police officer who killed him is being prosecuted, and rightly so. But it has long since not been about George Floyd. It's about Black Lives Matter promoting their socialist political agenda through violence, intimidation, and silencing anyone opposed to them. That's not something we want in Issaquah. So what does Black Lives Matter truly believe? Here it is, straight off their own website. Quote, "We dismantle the patriarchal practice that requires mothers to work double shifts so that they can mother in private even as they participate in public justice work," unquote. In other words, we're making it so single mothers don't have to work to raise a family. But what shape are those families in today? Why does she have to work double shifts? It's because there's no father in the home. It's been consistent for several decades now. 70% of black children are raised in a home where there is no father. The nuclear family, which is the best support structure for a family, is broken. What else does Black Lives Matter say about themselves on their website? Quote, "We disrupt the Western prescribed nuclear family structure requirement by supporting each other as extended families and villages that collectively care for one another, especially our children, to the degree that mothers, parents, and children are comfortable," unquote. But let's look at the contradiction here. Black Lives Matter wants to eliminate the nuclear family, but the black community already has the majority of the nuclear family eliminated at this time. How well is that working out? Forcing kids to grow up in a broken family is the worst idea ever, and Black Lives Matter wants to increase the number of broken families in the cultural, in the black cultural community. That is cultural suicide. Black Lives Matter started out after the death of Trayvon Martin and the acquittal of George Zimmerman, who wasn't charged, as witnesses said it was self-defense. Even Eric Holder, who was the Attorney General for the United States at the time, found there were no charges he could bring against George Zimmerman because it was clearly self-defense. Black Lives Matter built on that false story of Trayvon Martin and continued the same pattern of deception with Michael Brown incident in Ferguson, Missouri. Black Lives Matter built up the false story of "hands up, don't shoot," which obviously from the videotapes was a lie. Black Lives Matter is built on lies which are sensationalized for their own political gain, not for the betterment of blacks, and certainly not for the betterment of our community. Speaking of Eric Holder, who was the Attorney General during the Obama administration, they had eight full years in which they could have addressed these issues of Black Lives Matter, but they didn't address it at all. Why is that? Black Lives Matter does not have the best interest of black people or any people in mind. They are implementing their own socialist revolution on the backs of and to the detriment of black people. We are seeing more and more black people in the media, in music, in movies, and everyday working people standing up to say, "Black Lives Matter does not represent me and my beliefs just because my skin is black." Can some of them be racist? Maybe. Regardless of their social barriers, we're all people. You cannot say all cops are racist, nor can you say all white cops are racist because it is not true. As far as defunding or especially abolishing the police, well, just be ready for the consequences. We saw how well no police worked out on Capitol Hill in Seattle recently, and we've seen it as well in Detroit, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Atlanta, Baltimore, and Chicago. Abolishing the police will have a disproportionate negative impact on black neighborhoods. Why would we ever think abolishing the police is a good thing to do?
Excuse me? Mr. Kern, you've reached the end of your comment time?
Okay.
Please summarize.
Okay. We need to keep our beautiful vibrant city tolerant and understanding that Black Lives Matter is working against everything we stand for. They seek to divide us, separate us, and encourage misunderstanding between us. Mayor Polly, esteemed council members, and to everyone listening tonight, I thank you for your time and your consideration. I yield the floor.
City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up this evening to speak? I have no others who wish to sign up or who have indicated by the raise of hand with the *3 feature that they would like to make a comment.
Thanks. I want to apologize if my speaker created some echo for everybody in the meeting. I've switched over now to a headset, which I think should address it. And I want to thank Donna and Mike for coming in tonight, talking about Old Town Code updates related to pervious and impervious standards, and comments on the Black Lives Matters movement and abolishing the police. I hope, Donna, that you're able to stay with us tonight because I think some of the questions that you had will be addressed in tonight's presentation. So thank you both for coming and addressing the council and the mayor this evening. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isquawwa.gov, and in addition, comments received by email on tonight's agenda topics will be acknowledged by Council President Hunt under the relative agenda item. We've been doing this throughout the remote meetings due to COVID, and I appreciate that we can capture those comments that way. The next item of business is Committee and Regional Reports, and I'll go by calling each council member by name. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Hall here. I have one report for Cascade Water Alliance. So last Wednesday, June 24th, I guess that was a few Wednesdays ago, Mayor Polly and I attended a meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors. Among the many topics that we discussed, the board authorized the CEO to enter into a contract to perform hericide treatment for the control of aquatic vegetation in the Lake Taps reservoir. We were notified that Cascade has officially issued an RFP, or Request for Proposals, for a feasibility study of potential solar power generation at Lake Taps reservoir. And we were also notified that staff plans to meet with Pierce County staff later this summer to discuss planning efforts for Lake Taps and also potential amendments to the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan regarding stormwater management or stormwater treatment in the surrounding area. In addition to that, the board heard a presentation from Cascade staff on preliminary budgeting and water rates in the future. And if our meeting doesn't go too late, I plan to bring this topic back up during Good Order, as our conversation really centered around what an increase in water rates would look like. And I know Councilmember Mart brought this same issue up with King County a few weeks ago, so I wanted to honor that precedent and bring it up with you guys. I know what some of you might say, but I think I just wanted to gauge a city council's interest level. So we'll talk more about that later, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember DeMichelle. I attended a joint meeting of Metro Transit with the Eastside Transportation Partnership, South King County Transportation Board, and North King County Transportation Board on June 16th. The following day, on June 17th, Mayor Polly attended the Regional Transit Committee, and on July 2nd, a third presentation with the same information was given to the Sound Cities Association. At the joint meeting I attended, Peter Rogoff, CEO of Sound Transit, presented. Similar to the report we received from Metro Transit in April, Sound Transit experienced major declines in ridership in March and April, even more significant than those to Metro Transit. Sound Transit took measures similar to Metro Transit to reduce service, suspend fares, impose rigorous cleanliness standards, and suspend construction projects. So I'm just going to pause for a second and just say that a lot of times I hear from people, why do we have two different transit agencies serving us? Metro Transit's charter allows it to serve King County only. Sound Transit's charter allows it to serve King, Pearson, St. Holmes County via light rail trains and buses. And Issaquah is served by both Metro Transit and Sound Transit. There is a long historic and legal reason why we have two agencies to provide transit service in Issaquah, and I can provide a long explanation over a virtual coffee with anyone who's interested. So I'll just put that offer out there. Like Metro, Sound Transit is facing a huge budget shortfall over the next decade. For Metro, the shortfall is projected to be about $2 billion. For Sound Transit, it is projected to be about $1.5 billion. Care is funding provided each agency with some immediate relief that will not help with the long-range deficit. And a federal infrastructure bill or a federal bailout bill would help keep both agencies operating through the recovery period. At the meeting I attended, we also heard from Congressman Adam Smith, who said there is a strong bipartisan support for the reauthorization of the transportation bill, which would bring a projected $500 billion into local projects. He has a hope that it will be passed and signed by the president in September. However, he has very little hope for the HEROES bailout bill to be passed. So with respect to specific issues related to Issaquah, we face some unique challenges in restoring service to the Issaquah area. Diane Carlson, representing the Metro Transit, said that the agency has to balance demand and supply. The presentation given to the Regional Transit Committee and the Sound Cities Association shows that ridership on the east side drops the furthest of any place in King County, and Issaquah specifically is now in the bottom 10% for service demand. That is due, at least in part, to the fact that our residents are tech-savvy and wired, and telecommuting is both an option and a requirement for many households in Issaquah. I asked specifically about the impacts of telecommuting, since the majority of Issaquah bus riders are daily commuters, primarily to Bellevue and Seattle. And Carlson said that they are monitoring the situation, but the long-range impacts will take time to understand, and Metro anticipates that some changes will be permanent. Their focus now is on transit-dependent communities where people must access transit for work, shopping, and recreation. So overall, this is the most significant development for long-range recovery of service in the Issaquah area. It could have a significantly detrimental impact on our ability as a community to provide transit services to densifying areas in the downtown and central areas. And so that is my report on the Transit Committees. I will also be attending a virtual meeting of the Eastside Human Services Forum Legislative Committee tomorrow, and I will be attending the Healthier Here Governing Board on Thursday, July 9th. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Last week, I attended the Economic Development District Board meeting. This was actually our first meeting since we, everybody started quarantine, and one of the things we have realized is that as an economic development board, we are not situated very well with our meetings to respond rapidly to an economic crisis. So I don't know if we'll be adjusting that going forward. At this point, we meet quarterly, and so not very often. The Economic Development District Board, can you hear me? Yes? Okay. I just heard a noise. Okay. Is applying for a $400,000 grant from the Economic Development Administration to work on a COVID-19 response from a regional perspective. And then the other thing we addressed was an update to the Amazing Close idea, which is kind of our economic development strategy from a regional perspective. And we were set to approve a version that would last for the next five years, but we realize now that there may need to be some changes considering racial equity, and then also COVID-19, and how economic development will have to adjust. So we started talking about that, and we'll continue that conversation, and we have to submit the next version by January 2022. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Goodman here. On June 17th, I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Finance and Administrative Committee meeting. That committee recommended to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board to consider a more robust effort to collect transportation fees that are charged to the individuals who are not insured by insurance. Currently, the agency collects all that it is allowed to collect from Medicare, Medicaid, and from insurance coverage, but the agency only receives about 20% of the charges that are billed to private payers who are not covered by insurance, which leaves about $120,000 that's left uncollected each year. The board's decision years ago was to not do any collections, but that decision is now being revisited because the agency now does way more transports than it used to, so that leaves a lot more money that's uncollected. The related issue of the rate to charge for transports is a little complicated, and that will be discussed during the budget process. The rate that is now charged is the same as every agency in what's called Zone 1, which includes cities such as Kirkland and Redmond, and that is a rate that's negotiated with AMR, which is the private ambulance service. That rate is just under $800, but it doesn't begin to cover Eastside Fire costs. But the effect of Eastside Fire raising its fee for what it would charge is that the AMR fee would have to be raised as well because it's in a contract that requires the fee to be, AMR's right to be renegotiated if the agency changes its fee. So it does have a far-reaching impact that needs to be thoughtfully considered, and like I said, that will be considered during the budget process that's coming up soon, this fall. We also, at the committee level, had a very brief introduction to the proposed budget, and that's coming back before the committee. I think that's all we talked about. And then the board meeting for Eastside Fire will be July 9th at 4:00 p.m., and we will be having that ambulance fee collection discussion that I just discussed. We will also be having racial equity discussion, which is the first time that that issue has been before the board. And we also will have a discussion, kind of our first introduction to the potential new entity structure for the agency, and that will be coming to the city council for discussion. This is just a first. There will be more than one discussion at the Eastside Fire Board level, so no worries there that this is going to get decided without our city and other members' discussions. And I also wanted to note that for those people out there who know Larry Rudy, Larry Rudy has been with local fire service since the 1970s, specifically with Fire District 10, and he is moving to Maple Valley, so he will have to resign in August from his duties. So at that meeting on July 9th, there will be a recognition of Director Rudy's years of service. Tomorrow, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting at 3:00 p.m., this virtual meeting, and we will be discussing the COVID-19 impacts on the tourism and hospitality industries, and I think more specifically, the hit to the revenue, which has been on the lodging tax, which has been, as you can imagine, extraordinary. We also will be discussing $25,000 funding request from Village Theater and a future lodging tax revenues and funding ability for a visit Issaquah. And as part of all of those discussions will be the role of the committee and revenues and expenses. We haven't met for a while, so there will be a lot of overviews and that are important in light of all the economic circumstances right now. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on a remote-only basis this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. at Renton City Hall. On the agenda includes a discussion of the Board of Health's Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Emergency. And in a related matter, I want to point out that SCA will be hosting a Racial Equity and Justice Series, and that's open to elected. And the first panel discussion is scheduled for Friday, July 10th, from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m., and information on that is in our emails. And I just have to say, some amazing leaders in the region are part of the panel, so it should be a really good conversation. We will also be having a discussion on the budget outlook. That should be festive. And then the King County Regional Homelessness Authority will have an update on how things are going there. Then, after quite a while, the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board is meeting for the first time in about four months. It is going to be a remote-only basis. It's a special date, next Thursday, July 16th, well, Thursday, July 16th at any rate, from 10:00 a.m. till noon. On the agenda is included a briefing on housing efforts at PSRC, and On the agenda is included a briefing on housing efforts at PSRC, and hearing from outside speakers about collaborative housing work that is moving forward in the region, that should be good, and an update on implementation of the regional centers framework, and then finally, a recommendation on Buckley's Comprehensive Plan update. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on June 24th at 4:00 p.m. using a remote meeting format. There were five agenda items of interest. First, the GMPC approved minor changes to the urban growth area that were proposed in the 2020 King County Comprehensive Plan. One involved a roundabout in Woodenville. One involved the Maplewood subdivision adjacent to Maple Valley. And of most interest to us was one involving East Cougar Mountain Urban Growth Area. Three parcels that had been zoned for urban plan development were re-designated as rural areas. This change was supported by both the City Visqua and by the landowners. Number two, the GMPC received a briefing on the proposed changes to the 4-to-1 program. GMPC recommended that the King County Council defer any action on any changes to the 4-to-1 program that are related to the county-wide planning policies, and recommended that those amendments be considered as part of the 2021 update to the county-wide planning policies. Third, the GMPC received an update on the plan for completing the King County-wide planning policy updates and preparing the changes for presentation to the PSRC for certification by December 31st, 2021. Next, the GMPC was briefed on the progress towards completing the Urban Growth Capacity Report, including the schedule for completing the report. The Urban Growth Capacity Report is required for the Comprehensive Plan update and will be presented to the GMPC for approval in June of 2021. And finally, a GMP Affordable Housing Committee Status Report was presented on the work of the committee. GMPC will be considering Affordable Housing Committee recommendations and amendments to the county planning policies in December 2020. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President Ray. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I attended the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council Management Committee meeting on June 30th. This is a subcommittee of the Salmon Recovery Council, and we are tasked with administrative duties and oversight over things like the budget, and then we make recommendations to the Salmon Recovery Council. And also, a note that Wyra 8 is the technical name for our community's watershed. In the Salmon Recovery Council Management Committee meeting, we discussed the budget, and in particular, the cost share component of the budget, and the committee was generally in agreement that because of the extraordinary economic situation cities find themselves in right now due to the COVID-19 financial impacts, that we would, we recommended, we were in general agreement to recommend to forego our usual 2.39% cost increase and go with the same cost share breakdown as in last year. And so this will go before the full council at our next meeting. We also discussed adding a work plan item or adding more information about a work plan item to support local governments in terms of increasing the technical committee's input into local planning and salmon recovery efforts at the local level. And then we also discussed that we would like to, as a committee, have a larger equity discussion with the Salmon Recovery Council as well. And the next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be July 16th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have a couple of items to share. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, .140, per N4, per NA. The item is expected to last 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. I have an item on Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. So every day, the city staff of the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department are providing essential services to make Issaquah a better place to live, work, and play. July 17th, 2020, is Parks and Recreational Professionals Day in the city of Issaquah, and I'm going to read into the record a proclamation. Whereas we recognize that the parks and recreation field is a diverse and comprehensive system that improves personal, social, environmental, and economic health, and whereas we recognize the importance and benefits of park and recreation services that enrich the lives of its citizens and help makes this community a desirable place to live, work, and play, and whereas we support the skilled work of park and recreation professionals to strengthen community cohesion and resiliency, connect people with nature and each other, and provide and promote opportunities for healthful living, social equity, and environmental sustainability, and whereas we value the essential services that park and recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and developmental enrichment for our children, youth, adults, and older adults, and to ensure our parks and recreational spaces are clean, safe, inclusive, welcoming, and ready to use. I encourage all citizens to get out and see what our local parks and recreation has to offer and share your appreciation for the people who provide these essential services. I'd also like to give an update on our mask distribution efforts to date and our plan going forward. Friday, the Community Emergency Response Team, our CERT volunteers, distributed 1,000 masks at Blakely Hall and 350 at the community center. Combined with other locations, the total number handed out is 6,400 masks. CERT volunteers will set up tables at the following locations this week. City Hall from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., Tuesday through Friday for distribution. Blakely Hall from noon till 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday and Thursday, and the farmer's market from 8:30 till 2:00 on Saturday, July 11th. These events should deplete the remaining supplies that the city has to hand out of 9,100 masks. And just in case there are, is anyone out there who is wondering why we are doing this, masks are not only recommended in Washington State, masks are now required, so we want to make sure that they're available to everyone. And that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Moving through the agenda, we're going to go through some informational updates, and the first one is ID 0638 Neighborhood Engagement Program. And I'd like to ask Assistant to the City Administrator Autumn Monahan to make a presentation. Autumn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator, and I lead our communications team. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to talk about our Neighborhood Engagement Program. So first, I want to provide a quick overview about our program, as we have new council members since we've last presented on this body of work. During the City Council's 2015 Goal Setting Retreat, community leaders identified the need for more engagement at the neighborhood level. From that brainstorm, our Neighborhood Engagement Program was then born, officially founded in January of 2017. This program aligns very well with the city's strategic plan, including two specific guiding principles. The first is people, which is fostering community pride, engagement, strong and safe neighborhoods, and diverse opportunities. And the second is service excellence, which is delivering proactive, efficient, and effective public services for residents. We've often asked neighborhoods what they want to see from engagement with the city, and here's some of the feedback they've provided over the years. They value networking with each other. They like to hear from other people and from other neighborhoods, not just their own. They like to have the city leverage champions in each neighborhood to help facilitate engagement with their own personal connection. We also hear that they often like us to take engagement opportunities to our residents physically, instead of expecting them to come to City Hall for engagement. They ask that engagement is accessible, informal, and relaxed, and they also want to have an active role in selecting meeting topics. So here is a variety of tools we use to engage at the neighborhood level. This list of tools has varied over time, over the years, depending on success level, the demand, the topics that we're covering, and also the neighborhoods. So our neighborhoods are very different in Issaquah, and so some prefer certain tools over others. Once we've received feedback and we've worked on that engagement, we then provide that feedback back to our decision-makers in many ways. So through project updates, memos, agenda bills, in-person engagement, surveys, and maps, which I will highlight later in the presentation. So here's our work plan for 2020 involving neighborhood engagement. This has definitely changed due to our COVID-19 response. So much of what our residents value with this program is in-person engagement, and so we've had to get very creative in the last few months on how we connect with neighborhoods. So I'll cover each of these topics a bit more in depth tonight. First up is news items by neighborhoods. So thanks to our website redesign from last year, it enables us to send news to neighborhoods specifically by subscribers. So we work to promote this subscription feature every chance we can when engaging with residents, and then can really target and specify news that's important to certain neighborhoods. We're also experimenting with hosting some virtual neighborhood meetings as we stay safe by physical distancing. So far, we've hosted Timberlake Lane and Newport. Montrose HOA meeting is later this week, and several council members are joining Mayor Polly and I for that meeting. And then we're working on another meeting soon for some South Lake Simamish residents, so expect more details on that soon. For any of the city-hosted meetings that we've had, we've been able to record these via video and then share that afterward on our YouTube page, which has been very well-received. And while we've been covering a lot of citywide COVID-19 issues or other things that are more citywide in nature, there definitely have been a lot of neighborhood-specific questions at these meetings that require answers and follow-up, and so there is still a lot of interest from our community about very neighborhood-specific issues. Times have definitely changed for our neighborhoods, and so has the focus of our service delivery. COVID-19 has sparked a lot of questions on neighborhood gatherings. So we're working to help residents plan safe social options. What you see here is a step-by-step process that we've posted on our website for hosting food trucks in neighborhoods, which is happening in multiple places around town. There are also some key projects that are still proceeding this year that require a lot of neighborhood connections. Most definitely, the Washdott Auxiliary Lane Project, which will close one lane of Northwest Simamish Road here very soon. Will require a lot of outreach to the South Lake Simamish residents. Other examples include the new school, which is starting construction in Talas very soon. Before COVID-19, we were also working to finalize a welcome kit for new residents to Issaquah, which is something that we can print in the future and also post online. This is good for our neighborhood champions or liaisons to have on hand to welcome new neighbors to the neighborhood. And we also want to make this available in lobby areas or common areas of multifamily units here in Issaquah, and we've heard from realtors who are also excited to share this type of resource with new residents as well. There are plenty of other projects on our list that we will work on in the future. Examples include overhauling our process to host a block party in Issaquah. There are currently a lot of barriers to having a block party, including cost, time to make the application, and insurance requirements. So we really want to simplify that process and encourage neighbors to get to know each other through social events and have those, you know, neighborhoods' neighborhood connections. We also love the idea of taking the city council meetings on the road when we are able to meet again in person. So our idea was to maybe host two or three council meetings out in neighborhoods each year to facilitate engagement and hopefully pick some topics too that are of interest to those specific neighborhoods. We're also researching the idea of a neighborhood mini-grant program to encourage neighborhood connectedness. Several cities have similar programs, so we're doing some research on that front. We also have some great data from last year's National Community Survey on which neighborhoods in Issaquah are less engaged. So our goal is to help specific neighborhoods organize with each other, communicate better with one another, and then improve the two-way communications and engagement with the city. So when we first started this program, a big question was, how do we keep our city council informed of what's happening in neighborhoods as we conduct this engagement? So we created this dynamic tool, which is an online map that's available for anyone in the public to view. We have maintained this map since 2016, so you can filter it by year, you can filter it by neighborhood, and it shows all of the meetings we've had with neighborhoods, along with the number of attendees, the topics that were covered, and any links to attachments like the YouTube videos that I mentioned earlier. And so I am curious to hear from the city council tonight if this is still a useful tool for us to maintain in informing you about that type of engagement. And lastly, we'd like some feedback on how you, as city council members, would like to stay engaged with this program. We will continue to invite you to neighborhood meetings. I also encourage you to subscribe to our neighborhood alerts on our website. There's a button on our homepage titled "Notify Me," where you can select what topics you're interested in subscribing to. We will also email you when we update that neighborhood map with a link each time so that you can check on what kind of dialogue or what kind of engagement has taken place in certain neighborhoods, and hopefully we can take city councils, council meetings on the road at some point in the future. And with that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Autumn. I am prompting council members to raise their hand in the chat box, and we'll start to move through them. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. Autumn, thank you very much. This is my favorite subject in city government, so I appreciate the presentation. I have a few questions, and then I have a comment. The slide on community engagement tools that we had, I would be interested in hearing from you what the outreach tools, what was most fruitful, you think, in your opinion, in terms of type of outreach? Let's first talk pre-COVID, and then maybe talk now.
Sure, I'll start with now. And definitely, these virtual meetings have been helpful, and I think they're actually seeing a bit more engagement because people can just connect from their home than if they had to go to an event. In the past, when we've had neighborhood meetings, we've definitely offered something else, too, a place for kids to play. I love to have any kind of event outdoors, even near a playground, so that, you know, entire families can come. Sometimes we've served food or dinners because oftentimes we're hosting these meetings in the evening, and it's hard to juggle all of those family priorities as well. And so anything we can do to make it easier and more exciting for folks to come and engage with us on some city topics is helpful. So I would say definitely the email alerts we're doing right now, and then the virtual meetings have been helpful. I would also, you know, as I mentioned a couple weeks ago during a presentation, Nextdoor is a very powerful tool for communicating with our residents. More than half of households in Issaquah have a Nextdoor account. And so a very powerful way for us to push messaging out, which we can target by, it's amazing, we can target the entire city by Nextdoor, or we can target it by very specific neighborhoods. And so oftentimes, we'll do alerts, or we'll do news updates. Once we push it out through our website, we'll also post to Nextdoor and filter it to those specific neighborhoods to receive that news. So I would say no matter what time, Nextdoor has been a helpful tool. Pre-COVID, I would say that a lot of our residents do value that in-person connection and those relationships. So knowing us here at City Hall, knowing somebody to call when they have a question or concern, has always been super appreciated by our residents. And so as soon as we can do more in-person, I want to look at ways that we can brainstorm, again, how we can get out into our neighborhoods and make those one-on-one personal connections.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, thank you. This is Zach Hall again. Thanks, Autumn. Yeah, it's good to hear about Nextdoor. I actually just got a Nextdoor account last week. It's pretty cool. What else? I had been resisting it for too long. I just had to jump in. In terms of council meetings in neighborhoods, I'm really, really interested in that, and I'd be interested in what the city thinks the biggest barriers are, because I feel, you know, with an equity lens on it, or just a, you know, us going to neighborhoods equally lens on it. There might be places like Blakely Hall, it might be easier to host a meeting, but like South Lake Simamish, all along Newport, might be really difficult. So what are those barriers that we're looking to resolve?
Yes. I think a priority for us will be, as I mentioned, that the National Community Survey really gave us a lens on some neighborhoods that are less engaged. And one is Newport, and I would say we have a lot of new residents that are in that Newport neighborhood. And so as we were brainstorming options, one idea was, and we had actually reached out and we're working with Gateway, they have a great community space in their new property, and we're open to the idea of us hosting a city council meeting there. So we So we would have gotten creative, we would have had a kitchen as part of our meeting space. But we were ready to really investigate options like that so that we could maybe start the meeting with, you know, a dinner or at some time that we could all socialize a bit before the meeting and then ensure that we have some topics that council's talking about that night that also pertain to that neighborhood. So that was the idea and a focus to start with some of the less-engaged neighborhoods. I'd say those that are very well-connected, like Highlands and Talis, would be really easy to do. But I think that we're up for the challenge in trying to find creative ways to reach out to other neighborhoods that we're just not as connected with.
Good point. Mayor Polly, if I may, just one final comment, and then I'll stop hogging the space. My apologies.
Actually, Councilmember Hall, can I ask you a favor? Can you hold the comment? Because I, again, forgot to go to Council President Hunt to let all of the council hear about any email that might have come in. And so I will go to her, and then I will come back to you for your comment. Thanks. Council President Hunt, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive any comments specific on this item.
Okay, that was a bit of a letdown on my part. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall again. Last thing I wanted to say too is specific kind of about the South Cove neighborhood. And Autumn, I heard that you, it seems like you caught it. I heard you say South Lake Simamish. And those of you in the city know, I'm kind of a stickler for this thing. I grew up in the South Cove neighborhood in the way we see it. You know, there are several, and we all know you know this, but there are several different neighborhoods in that South Lake Simamish area. South Cove, Meerewood Point, Greenwood Point, Lindley Shore, Timberlake Lane, Simamish Beach Club. So as you enter that community, there's a big sign that says "South Lake Simamish." And so I was wondering what the city thought about maybe changing how we refer to that, to the neighborhood as "South Lake Simamish" on the website and in future plans that we do. And I'd be interested in what council thinks, too.
That's a great question. I'm not sure if you wanted to have that discussion now or have us footnote that, that you'd like to have that conversation. Thank you. I appreciate, thank you. I appreciated that Autumn also referred to the, as the South Lake Simamish communities. I think that is great. I'm going to move now to, back to Council, sorry, Deputy Council President Ray, followed by Council President Hunt.
A question and two comments. First, have we looked at ways that we can pick the public brain for ways to engage? I mean, I think we're doing a really interesting job, and we're trying to find new ways. But how do we, how do we engage with the public, you know, to tell us how best to engage for them? And then more importantly, how do we engage with those people who have really been on the fringe and not been actively involved in the community? To increase the number of people.
Yes, that's always our goal. And like I said, I think one of the first items is identifying those neighborhoods that we have not done a lot of engagement or have a lot of relationships with, and then work to find some more of those neighborhood champions. I have a great list of folks that I can email or call and say, hey, will you help me get the news out about this with your neighbors? And that is always more effective than the city pushing or, you know, news out or asking for engagement is to ask for help from the neighborhoods. And so, you know, that is, that is one priority for me in the coming, you know, months and in the coming years is finding those areas that we've not reached out with as much and then really working to create some good personal relationships with folks who can help me and leveraging their connections as well.
And then two comments. One is, as difficult as it has been through this COVID-19 crisis, we have learned a lot about new ways to do meetings and new ways to engage. And I think we need to build on that and keep that option open. And then the second comment I have was the lesson I learned on Saturday as we graded through South Lake Simamish neighborhood. And, you know, we took, it was a, it was a small thing, but it was a really good example of taking what we do to the community instead of waiting for the community, making the community come to us. And the parade was, I thought, an unmitigated success. And, you know, who does everybody who made that happen? And then I just want to give a shout out to the South Lake Simamish neighborhood because without a doubt, they were the neighborhood that turned out the best. So I don't know why that is, but they did. Not that everybody didn't turn out, but they rocked it. So anyway, that was my only comment. That was a really interesting example of how to think differently about things, and it's a model I think we need to do more of.
Thank you. Great comment. I totally plus-one that on thanking them for, everybody for putting it together. Going to go to Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. So we did not receive any comments specific on this item, but we did receive, and I forwarded to council, that we have received some feedback from a resident of Squawk in terms of frustration about the internet service on Squawk and that there's not communication about what's being improved. And the importance of that in particular right now when so many people are using the internet for meetings and for work and for school. And why I think that is relevant to this conversation is because there are very specific neighborhood differences. And that is one concern of that neighborhood. And specific, and I, as a former resident of that neighborhood, I think that neighborhood, many of the homeowners and the people living there are not in HOAs, and they don't have that organizational structure. So it's that much more important for some neighborhoods to have a framework or to have something like the mini-grants program, I think, would be very empowering. And the, you know, ability to have block parties without having to jump through hoops would also be really important for those communities that don't have those structures in place otherwise. So I just wanted to, you know, you mentioned that all the neighborhoods have different character and different needs in terms of neighborhood engagement. I think that's really important to continue to address those needs of the different neighborhoods. I, I think that the mini-grants program, we've been talking about that for a while, and I would really like to see that explored more fully because, again, for those neighborhoods that don't have a HOA or an organization in place to make changes, I think that would be something that they could, those neighborhoods could come together and work on together and could, it could be really, really great opportunity. It reminded me of, there's a book, "The Case for Everyday Democracy", by an author who I probably will pronounce his name wrong, but Malenko Matovich, who has a personal connection to Issaquah. And in that book, they talk about the placemaking and the power of neighborhoods coming together over a project. And I think the mini-grant program would be really great for that. So I would like to see that go forward. I appreciate the neighborhood engagement. I think we have a lot of work to do specifically with those community residents who continue to feel like they want more information and more connection with the city. And then you asked about how council members want to be engaged. I think it is really important that, well, for me, I would want to do all of the options listed. I think maintaining personal connections with people in the neighborhoods is important so you hear voices from people in the neighborhoods when issues come up specific to those neighborhoods. So I would like to continue to use the Neighborhood Engagement Program to make connections with residents through all the options that were listed.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So I'll jump out on some of the questions that you had asked us to specifically respond to. I don't find the map very useful. There, to me, there's just some barrier that when you email and say, hey, there's updates, like, oh, I have to click through that, and then I have to find it on there. And I don't know, it just, I don't tend to engage in that way. I would prefer just an email that lists out, hey, here's the top points that I think are important to you. On the note of how do council members want to engage? I love the idea of online meetings. I think that gives us an opportunity to work in time in our busy lives to connect with the different neighborhoods. So I'm interested in that. For your recommendation, I have signed up for the "Notify Me" for all the neighborhoods. So I'm also interested in seeing how that gets used. I really appreciated you in the presentation saying, this is how the residents want to be engaged. This is, this is what they're looking for from the program. So using that as the evaluation scope, I would say with online meetings, we're able to bring the meetings to them. Online meetings also allow them to choose the topics, which is great. What I'm not really seeing as much of is networking. And I think, you know, whether that is encouraging people to sign up for Nextdoor or encouraging, you know, having a sheet that people can sign up for on those online meetings that says, here's my email. I'm going to send out an email to everybody if you check the box so that you guys can start having conversations after that. Just, I think there's a little more that might be able to be done to engage in that way. But otherwise, I think you've checked those boxes by being responsive to what the community is looking for, which is great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Autumn, I just want to say that it seems like we've put a lot of work into this over the past few years and that we've made some significant progress. And I really appreciate that. I do hear comments from community members that they appreciate all our efforts to engage with the neighborhoods. I, too, like all of the options you've laid out for engagement, and like all of them, and very much appreciate that we are, as council members, finally getting what appears to me routinely invited to these meetings. And I really, really appreciate that and hope we keep that up. And as far as I'm concerned, if we have to cross that threshold of four council members wanting to attend, and so we have to notice it as a public meeting, then I am in favor of considering that rather than restricting it to three or to have some sort of a, some sort of a, I'm not sure. But I'm not sure I'm thrilled with the first-come, first-served because we're not always on our emails. And so it doesn't seem, in the long run, to be the fairest way. So I think we might want to think about a different way to do that. I'm certainly not opposed to noticing the meetings. Anyway, thank you very much for the presentation and all of your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you for letting me have another comment. So I was thinking about how important it is to listen, but I also was thinking about how important it is to feed back to the community what we hear. And how do we close the loop? And how do we make sure that when we are going out and meeting with a community and we are getting their input, that we are using that information to help guide us in day-to-day operations and also in policymaking? And then how do we provide feedback to a community that has given us input and say, yes, we heard you, and here's what we did? So it's taking it from next step, from being really good listeners to being active participants with the community. So just, I think we're ready. We, as everyone has said, we've come a long ways in the listening front, yay. But now let's take the next step and say, how do we start making it a dialogue?
There was a question in there, right? Autumn? All right, go ahead, Autumn.
That was just a comment. But if Autumn would like to respond to it, that'd be awesome.
Yes, closing the feedback loop is extremely important to me because why else would you continue engaging with the city if you don't hear back after providing your feedback? And so we have an engagement toolkit that we use with all of our staff when they're, when they are starting a project and planning out their project on how, what level of engagement, what tools they'll use, how they'll plan for scheduling that type of engagement. And a big part of that toolkit is how do you then close that engagement loop? And I have found that our website subscribe tool has been very popular in that once we engage with folks and they provide their feedback, we say, please go subscribe to your neighborhood. That way, I have their email account and their address, not only for the topic that we're engaging on at the moment, but I have it for years later. So I've found that to be very important, that as we start to build these contact lists, that I can keep them for more than one issue as they come. But we are using those news items to keep folks updated. So a good example is Old Town. We've had so many different touches with Old Town and many news items we've sent as we've updated whether items are going to be on your agenda or a decision's been made or a policy has been voted on, that we then close that loop and we say, here's what the decision was or here's what program or activity or thing is happening. And so that's very important, and it's something that we continue to talk about with our internal team as we look at engagement toolkit.
Thank you, Autumn. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments right now, but I did want to add on a couple of thoughts. Having been on council when the community engagement goal came about, it really was sort of a three-legged stool of trying to connect the elected council with the community, the community with the city administration, and the city administration with the elected council. And it's been an evolutionary process. The tools were developed first, and now we're working on the connections. I really feel like this council and community has moved into phase two, which is the exciting one, which is more opportunities to strengthen the council-community link by finding the opportunities for council members to go out at events that are already planned by others or events that we plan, and you put you face-to-face with your constituents. So I feel like this has evolved in a wonderful way, and it is really close to meeting my expectations for what that original council goal was supposed to obtain. I'm a, I cannot wait to have a council meeting offsite. The second thing is, I want to point out that one thing that has really made us struggle in this town is the loss of other media outlets and that the community relied heavily on newspapers to get more details about things that were going on in town, to look at the calendar and see what was going on. And, you know, I hear every month from somebody who is mourning the loss of some of those other media outlets that used to be here. So this work that we're doing right now is super important. So Autumn, I want to thank you for providing the update today and not seeing any other comments. We will move to our next informational item, which is ID 0725, the Old Town Traffic Calming Update. And I'd like to ask Senior Engineer Matt Ellis to make the presentation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Polly and council members. This is Matt Ellis with Public Works Engineering. And this is an update on the Old Town Traffic Calming. So the purpose is to present updates on work relating to the Old Town traffic calming and other projects around the schools and nearby neighborhoods. So on February 12th, 2020, the administration held an open house with residents within the Old Town neighborhood regarding traffic calming projects and studies. And topics were then presented to council on February 25th, 2020. Council provided direction on the following topics: Second Avenue and Bush intersection improvements, school zone signage evaluation, and the DARS neighborhood turning restrictions, including the Fourth Avenue closure. So tonight, I'll talk about these activities on these items and next steps. So here's a picture of the Second Avenue and Bush Street intersection. This is right before the start of school, and we are looking at ways to improve this intersection. Next slide. So here, we've done a survey of the intersection, and we've started to do the design of putting in narrower lanes with some bulb-outs. We are evaluating different features, including street lighting, potential beacons, and possibly a mountable traffic circle in the middle that would help slow traffic and improve pedestrian safety. This is just a preliminary design, and we're still looking through our turning movements just to verify that all vehicles can get through the intersection safely. So, next slide. The next step is to discuss the topic with the school district. We've already began that process. And we, this summer, we will install temporary curbing to match our intended design. And we will, the school district has agreed... And we will, the school district has agreed to provide us one bus and one bus driver to drive the interim improvements and see how a bus operates. And then we can make changes accordingly before we put in the permanent improvements. So we get a really cool opportunity to see things in person and really see how it will impact the people that drive it every day. After that, we'll discuss it with the Eastside Fire and Rescue and city staff, including our operations department, just to verify that the improvements will be effective for fire vehicles, emergency vehicles, and our snowplows. We will also coordinate with the neighborhood once we've got a design in the near completion, just to make sure that we've heard all their comments and that this is something that will benefit the community. We then plan to return to council and I, we believe we can do this in the fall and we'll talk about financial stuff on a later slide. Next slide. The second topic is the school zone signage evaluation. So we looked at signage in and around Isicua High School, Middle School, and Clark Elementary to see if improvements need to be made at certain crossings. Next slide, please. So I did a desktop survey of all the crossings in and around the schools and also the signage that correlates with those crossings. So the red are the crosswalks and then the signs that we currently have in place are shown. And from that, we are currently evaluating what we can do to improve certain crossings and then going to provide a recommendation to the school district and to council. Next slide. So this does require quite a bit of coordination with the school district and they will provide us with their pedestrian walking route for the school, the, the schools in question. That way we can better evaluate the crossings. Unfortunately, this does require a physical evaluation of students walking to school. And unfortunately, we cannot do that with school not in session. So to finalize our design and really fine-tune where we want to put in signs and where we can do some micro-improvements to really emphasize different crossings and make things safer for both pedestrians and drivers, we need to be able to do this on the ground while students are going to and from school. So this will probably have to resume in 2021 to get this finalized. But during that process, we will coordinate with the neighborhood and then return to council with a recommendation, probably in the beginning of 2021, hopefully when school resumes. And finally, is the Darce neighborhood and Fourth Avenue closure. This is a picture of the, the closure recently. The temporary barriers keep getting moved by residents and the right turn restrictions into the neighborhood are currently not being enforced and not being abided by, by residents. And they're not, the intention of these things was to restrict student driver, driving behavior in and around the neighborhood while school is in session. And since school is not in session, it's not the, it's not being utilized for its correct purposes. And so our recommendation on this is to remove the temporary barrier in the short term and put bags over the signs and then reinstall when school resumes again. And finally, is our funding for improvements. All these improvements utilize the school zone safety fund. We currently have a balance of approximately $2.2 million for this. And that includes about two and a half months of revenue from this year before school was no longer in session. And then this helps facilitate expenditures for the camera maintenance, court enforcement, as well as supports Isicua Police Department enforcement. And then it helps pay for certain capital improvement projects, including the Eastlake-Smemish Parkway and 43rd Way Roundabout Revisions Project that is slated for later this year, as well as the Newport Pedestrian Bridge and Raised Intersection Project that is currently slated for this year, and small capital projects. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the Newport Pedestrian Bridge and Raised Intersection Project will most likely slide till next year due to a right-of-way conflict. And that potentially gives us an opening to put in the Second Avenue and Bush Street improvements this year, if we can get all the things done that we need to do. And then that would, that way we would do the Eastlake-Smemish Parkway this year and as well as the Second Avenue and Bush Street improvements. And then the signage improvements would be a small capital project that we could do in 2021. And that is just the update that I have for now. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. I'm going to go to Council President Hunt first for community comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive one comment from a community member on this topic. The comment was overall negative about these improvements. So specifically, this resident felt that the turn signal change reversal that's proposed was inadequate and didn't address the residents' long advocated for change and also did not think that characterizing the concern as being specific only to students turning was, was accurate and that it was a bigger problem. And then, so, so basically not for reversing the turn signal change. And also was concerned about traffic from increased density resulting from the Old Town Land Use Amendments that will, that council will also discuss later this evening and the effects of those amendments on the effectiveness of these traffic changes.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to start with Councilmember Goodman for comments or questions.
I have a question. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Matt, thank you for the update. And I wanted to ask a question about, we've heard several comments and requests from some community members about school zone areas and that they seem to be much broader at other schools. And my understanding of what you were presenting about signs had to do more with pedestrian routes to the schools. And so I was wondering what the city is doing in response to, or what the city has done in response to the request that we look at an expanded school zone. And I think specifically, state RCW was mentioned by the residents. So that's my, that's my question. It's overall talk, topic of where we stand with being responsive to the residents' concern about a broadened school zone.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Oh, thank you. So the RCW is about the reduced speeds prior to a school. And that, the RCW does state it's 300 feet from the school. So we're not looking at increasing the, that zone, but we are looking at increasing signage around the schools to provide safer crossings. So it, it does, we are evaluating the pedestrian routes to school, which is part of that RCW to provide more awareness for people getting to and from the school.
Councilmember Goodman, does that answer your question?
Well, it answers my question. Not sure I agree, but anyway, you answered my question. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. I have two questions I'd like to ask. The first one is, I live fairly close to, to the intersection, Second and Bush. And I see a lot of, well, I don't know if it's a lot. I do see students who are taking their bicycles to school. And I'm just wondering if the plan that you've put together takes into account safety and sightlines and so forth for kids who are riding their bikes? And, and have you integrated that part of our transportation picture into the, into the plan?
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be evaluating that. We have not finished the design. We've just begun.
Okay. And, and then my second question is, and I'm sorry for it being so complicated, but of course we've seen this huge reduction in traffic since March. And I've heard from residents in the Old Town area that we've had less traffic, but that that has sometimes increased the speed of the cars that are going through. And then the third part of the puzzle is, I'm hearing from, and I haven't heard anything definitive, I should make that really clear, but I'm hearing that there's thoughts about staggering the number of kids coming in because they have to do social distancing at school. So we might have half of the kids there instead of the usual number. So all that is kind of like, you know, there's just a big unknown about, are we going to have as much traffic as we usually have? Is it going to be spaced out over the day instead of in the morning and the afternoon? And so just some questions, maybe when you work with the school district, to be thinking about in terms of the impacts of COVID may be long-term here and may have a significant impact on the plans that we're making.
Thank you for that comment, Councilmember DeMichele. I think even with the not having the kids in school, because it does tend to be one of those north-south routes through town, that there will always be great concern about having that kind of route through a residential area. So that was a really good comment. Thank you very much. Kind of, if you are, are you done, Councilmember DeMichele?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall again. Couple of questions. What you were just saying in response to Councilmember Goodman's question, the distance away from a school, a school zone in, is, is that a long, a specific route traveled? Or is it like a circle around the school and that's the school?
I'm not as familiar with the RCW to know the in and outs of that. But that's something that we will evaluate, see if there's ways we could extend it or ways to improve it.
Well, and even just, I'm interested why members of our community think schools, school zones are bigger for other schools than they are for, for Isicua High School and Isicua Middle School. So I think investigating that is prudent. My other question was about the evaluation of student walking routes. Is that a state law or is that a city regulation? Or why do we have to see them walk to school in person?
Well, the schools are supposed to have a pedestrian walking route that is designated. And it allows us to, to actually see where kids are crossing. So if they're crossing on one side of the street or the other, we could then make recommendations for putting signs on one side or the other, emphasize where they cross, make improvements at certain points, whereas other parts may not be as, as necessary. It just provides us a little more data to make a holistic approach to improving routes to school.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought that. My final question, sorry, Mayor Polly, thank you, is the, the graphic that you have a second in Bush. One of the labels says RRFB. I was just wondering what that was.
That is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Those are, you can see those all over town. We're still evaluating if that is a improvement that we would put here, just because there are some challenges with those and we don't want people to get complacent. But it is a good method. It is something that we are considering.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall, thank you very much. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I had two questions. One is, is there, you, you mentioned having to have, that kids had to be walking to school in order to survey the, the walking routes for the signage? And is that a requirement by law or could you do that with the survey? And I guess my question is, if we could, if we could just survey and find out the, the most common routes to school, could we improve signage before the kids go back to school rather than have to wait on that?
That's a good question. I believe we could get a good, a good head start by asking those questions from the community. Again, I think my, there's no requirement on it. It was more of my thought to really see if we could fine-tune the crossings. Because I think everybody has different perspectives on, on how kids get to school. But definitely, input from the community is most welcome and really how we'll get most information at this point in time. It was just a thought to get more accurate data was to see it in person. But no, we don't, there's no requirement and we could do that if that is the direction that we want to take.
Okay. Thank you for that. The comment is that I know on the, on the Gilman revisioning exercise, there was an online survey and people could actually put markers on that map and maybe something like that could be potentially explored anyway. My second question is about the, the reversal or the putting the bags over the no left-turn signs. So right now there is school closure due to COVID, but there's also school closure regularly for holidays and for the summer. And so would the proposal be to put the bags over the signs whenever school is not in session? And then, so, you know, turn them on and off basically, depending on if school is in session?
That's a good question. Our intention was primarily due to COVID because the closure would be prolonged. Obviously, summers pose a bit of a challenge on that. But, and that's something we'll have to, we'll have to talk about. So I, I don't know at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Great question, Council President Hunt. I think we're trying to balance how to easily and effectively let the neighbors access their streets and to be able to access them at all in heavy traffic. So it's a difficult balancing exercise. That's a great question about the summer. I'm going to ask Kurt Seaman to make some comments on school zone signs before we go back to questions from councilmembers.
Don't need, there you go. Am I off, am I speaking now?
We can hear you.
I was speaking all the time. I just didn't know if you could hear me. So thank you, Mayor Polly. Yeah, I think Jim Haney, our attorney, is going to comment about the legality of the school zone areas. But just in the, let me, let me talk briefly about, I think to Councilmember Goodman's and others' question about school zones and school signs. I think it's always been our intent to have the school zone, the regulated school zone where you need to slow to 20 miles an hour, remain the same. And Mr. Haney, I think can comment on that as well. I think the comment from the residents, can't keep track of time here, but when they came into council and talked about school areas that were signed more completely, I think they gave some examples in Bellevue, if I remember correctly. Those signs were to alert drivers in the area of the school that there was a school and that they were driving into an area where there, where there was a school or multiple schools. And so what Matt was showing on that map, our intention is to put up similar signs. We looked at those school areas in Bellevue and we're looking to replicate that idea here in Isicua. So it's two different ideas related, but different. One is the school zone and the, and the legal part of it, which Mr. Haney can talk about. And the, you know, it's the slow at 20 miles an hour, it's where you get your tickets. And then the other part of it, which is more broadly signing the area to let people know as they're driving in that, we'll call it the southern Old Town area and the area around is your So I don't know if that, that helps clarify things or makes it more complicated. I'm not sure which.
Thank you, Kurt. I think if we, when we go back to councilmember questions and comments, we'll find out if that helped or hurt. City Attorney Haney, you have some comments?
Yes, I can just answer two questions that came up during the discussion. The first was where the school zone could be located. Under state law, you can have a school zone on any street that borders a school or a school playground. So first of all, it has to be on a street that borders. It can't be on streets that don't. Second, you can have that, that school zone extend 300 feet from the border of the school. So it can go beyond the school boundaries, the boundaries of the school property, up to 300 feet beyond that. So those are the two parameters in state law, and that's where you create a school zone that has a speed limit of 20 miles per hour. So that's what dictates that. The other question that was raised was the, the requirement for walking areas. And under state law, all school districts are required to come up with a school district walking plan, a route, suggested route plan for kids who walk to and from school. And there are guidelines put out by the Washington State Department of Transportation on how those route plans are to be put together. And then the school districts are required to disseminate those plans to all of their students so that students will know the safest way to walk to school. So that's all I had to add regarding that unless there are any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney Haney. I'm going to go back to the list and we'll keep working down it. Councilmember Walsh is up next.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Well, I will comment on both of those responses from Kurt and Jim Haney and say that that is very helpful to understand how, how the school zone area is limited and also understanding that, yes, the intention is to put out signs. I think that would make the community feel very heard and is exactly what they're looking for, which is important. Matt, I would say thank you very, very, very much for saying that we're going to start with kind of a trial run of cheap, put a few things down, you know, paint or cones and see how it works for the school district and everything. I think that's fantastic. My question is, how long will that be live? And is it possible then to message out using Autumn's fantastic notify me to the neighborhood, the Old Town neighborhood to say, hey, we're going to have this live, please check it out, please comment to us. You know, kids are dying for something, that's probably the wrong word. Kids are excited to have opportunities to engage during this summer period. And so having, encouraging them to walk it with their parents and show them how they would do it, I think would be a fabulous, fabulous way to engage with that community and also test it out. And you might even get enough people responding with how they walk that you wouldn't need to wait necessarily until school is back in session.
Very good point. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Did you have any other questions or comments?
My question was just, how long do you plan to keep the temporary stuff alive?
We have not made a decision yet. We just, we primarily wanted to get the school buses through, but we would definitely keep it up long enough for the community to test it out as well. That's a fantastic idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I'm going to circle back now to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Thanks, Attorney Haney, for that. I'm looking at Washington Administrative Code 468-95-330. And the second to the last sentence says, "The no school or playground speed zone may extend less than 300 feet from a marked school or playground crosswalk, but may extend by traffic regulation beyond 300 feet based on a traffic and engineering investigation." So I mention this not because I don't think you're accurate. I mention it because I'm still a little bit confused because there seems to be some conflicting information. What I would like is a more thorough response to the community's repeated concern that my words not necessarily there is, that they think we might, that this area, because we have so many schools and students in this very, very small area coupled with regional traffic, that I would like more information. I think we, they deserve more information about what we specifically can and can't do, and then specifically what we plan to do. I like to start with our, the authority of what we can and can't do and then move to our intent. So I'm not completely satisfied with the answers tonight. I understand the answer, but I'm not completely satisfied. And if I'm not completely satisfied, then I'm guessing that the folks who keep coming to us are not, are not satisfied either. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Is there, I'm not seeing any staff wishing to comment on that, on Councilmember Goodman's comments. So I'm going to move to Council President Hunt.
Thank you. So I, I had a couple of comments. One is that I think it is potentially confusing to be changing the left-hand turn sign and putting a bag over it, taking the bag off depending on whether or not school is in session. And also confusing or just a strange, it seems strange to me to be changing the way we route traffic. It seems like, you know, the COVID-19 crisis has changed traffic throughout all of our neighborhoods. So to try to retailer the way that traffic is moving based on that new pattern seems like we could spend a lot of effort trying to optimize for that and then potentially we'll start seeing traffic returning or, or we don't know how much it's going to be returning. But I, I guess I just, that doesn't seem, I don't see the full reasoning behind that. And so it is concerning because to have it be there sometimes and then not there sometimes is probably confusing for the neighborhood and especially confusing for people that might want to, or might start using that as a, as a pass through traffic, which is, I know, a concern to the neighborhood. And then I appreciate the, the temporary improvements to the intersection. We did receive a lot of feedback on the need for improving the safety for pedestrians at that particular intersection. So I appreciate that going forward at this time. And I also appreciate looking into more signage. I think having more signage, more awareness of the speed reductions around the school is important, but continues to be something that we've heard time and time again from the neighborhood. They want to have it be safe for pedestrians and for the people getting to school in that area. So to the extent that we can work on the signage issue more and have that signage improved, that would also be great.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to get City Attorney Jim Haney to provide some comments on Councilmember Goodman's earlier question and comment. Mr. Haney?
Yes. The RCW that Councilmember Goodman is looking for, I think, is RCW 46.61.440. The WAC that she's looking for is a depart, is a, is a part of the highway regulations. But basically what the RCW says is it, in section one, it says that if you have a marked school crosswalk or marked playground crosswalk, then you can have, you must have a lower speed limit of 20 miles per hour, 300 feet from the boundaries of that crosswalk on either side. But as far as if you don't have a school with a marked school crosswalk, the rule is that it is the entire boundary of the school plus 300 feet on either side of the border. So.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Haney. I am not seeing anyone else lining up for questions or comments, so I would like to thank Matt for his presentation and update. Thank you very much. And we will, thanks. And we'll move down, a little further down our agenda this evening to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
This is Chris Ray. They have.
This is Councilmember Walsh. They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I am not seeing anything in the chat box. So before we move to the motion, I'd like to see if Council President Hunt has any email comments that she would like to share on consent calendar items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive email on the consent item.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Council President Hunt?
I moved to approve the consent calendar as presented in this evening's agenda.
This is Chris Ray. I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would like to ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Clerk Eggers speaking. Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I had built in a potential five-minute break at nine o'clock. I just want to take the temperature of the body and see if you'd rather have that five-minute break now before we move into the next item. Seeing a bunch of head nods, so City Clerk, I think what we'll do is take the five-minute break now and reconvene at 8:46.[1309.92] break now before we move into the next item. Seeing a bunch of head nods, so City Clerk, I think what we'll do is take the five-minute break now and reconvene at 8:46.
To connect with Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, City Clerk. So we are back in session, and we're going to move into our regular business item, AB 7788, the Old Town Lounge Code Amendment. The request of council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and this item was last heard by council at the February 25th council study session, which seems like a year or more ago. I'd like to invite Senior Planner Kristen Leeson to make a presentation. Welcome, Kristen. It's nice to see you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I have been asked to provide an introduction as to why and how we arrived at the proposed amendments that are before you tonight, so I'm going to do that first. In early March of this year, we had planned to begin a conversation with council about growth in Issaquah over the next several decades and what that might look like in all of our unique neighborhoods that make up our city. The council's work schedule for 2020 was dramatically upended by a series of crises this year, and we're still working to reschedule many items. The study session for March 10th was subsequently canceled, and we anticipate bringing this back to this conversation back to the council regarding citywide growth sometime either in Q3 or late Q3 or Q4 of 2020. Issaquah is located within an urban growth boundary and is required under the state's Growth Management Act to plan for future growth in coordination with the county. So as part of this larger conversation, we hope to engage city council in a dialogue about varying ways that each of our neighborhoods is expected to grow in the years to come. Direction provided by council will be used to inform the negotiation of future growth targets with King County. These negotiations are expected to begin in fall of 2020 and will set the path for the next several decades. In the 90s, as the state's Growth Management Act was put into place, the city was able to meet the growth targets by upzoning certain areas in the city. We will be able to meet our 2006 to 2031 growth targets primarily through the construction of the Highlands and Talis. It's anticipated that Central Issaquah will be able to accommodate the majority of future growth over the coming decades. However, most of our existing neighborhoods will also see some changes, but to, excuse me, a much lesser degree. Our vision is to maintain the character of our existing neighborhoods as Central Issaquah is transformed into a more urban-style city center. The city's strategic plan, Growth and Development Objective 1, is for neighborhoods to retain their charm and distinctive character patterns and settings. The first potential action is to update codes and standards to retain and protect essential characteristics in established neighborhoods. So while we're looking forward to the whole of the city growth conversation with council, we're continuing our work in some of our existing neighborhoods to ensure that we can maintain their character. Tonight, we're talking about Old Town. It is anticipated that Old Town will have low to moderate growth over the next several decades with the addition of some duplexes, accessory dwelling units, and potentially low-rise multifamily over first-floor retail along Front Street or in maybe Sunset Way, East Sunset Way. In 2014, after spending seven years on Central Issaquah, the council asked staff to refocus on Old Town to ensure its character and economic vitality remain intact. In 2015, Mayor Butler formed the Old Town Vitality Task Force. Businesses and property owners made recommendations to update the Old Town Subarea Plan and to update development regulations that would better support development and redevelopment of commercial properties. Prior to the plan update, the council asked staff to include preservation of the residential areas as well. In 2018, after several open houses, a survey, mini-commission meetings, and council meetings, the Subarea Plan received its first update in over 20 years and was adopted by council. The proposed code amendments before you are a result of the adopted update. Some of the issues brought up in public conversations included management of existing parking, concerns over code that could allow development out of scale and character for Old Town, concerns from the business community that current codes are hindrance to commercial development or redevelopment, the prioritization of vehicles over pedestrians, inactive spaces that could be repurposed to enhance community engagement and interaction, a lack of connection to Issaquah Creek, and a lack of services to support a residential neighborhood. The vision for the Old Town neighborhood is to be a complete, well-serviced community with smaller-scale architecture, easily and safely traveled by car, on foot, or on bike, and to serve as the historic downtown of our city. The code amendments included in AB 7788 tonight are items that council suggested could proceed and would address concerns over existing code that would allow development out of scale and character for a historical downtown and out of step with the neighborhood vision, and the lack of services to support a residential neighborhood. There will be a future agenda bill or two as we work through the other items that council requested, where council requested additional discussion and clarification, and those items could address concerns from the business community that current codes are a hindrance to commercial development or redevelopment. So now, I will like to walk us through the specific proposed code amendments for tonight. I need to share my screen. One moment. There we go.
Thank you, Kristen. We can now see your screen.
Okay. Thank you. So, as Mayor Polly mentioned, tonight, the purpose of our discussion is to continue discussion on the proposed amendments that were continued, they're being continued from February 25th, and to take action on an ordinance. You may recall, and I should mention too, that we did the outreach for the plan, which gave very specific direction for code updates, and then following the adoption of the plan and in preparation for the code updates, we did two Planning Policy Commission meetings, two public hearings, and we also sent out letters to every property owner describing each of the proposed amendments. In the plan, we adopted immediate actions, short-term actions, and longer-term actions. And I'm going to walk through this quickly just to let you have an idea of where we stand so far. So you probably wondered what my colors were when I sent out the presentation. The new Architectural Standards and Design Guidelines, which we are just calling Architectural Standards, are in progress. We are working on those right now. It's been slowed a little bit because of COVID and the lack of the ability to do the public outreach that we'd like to do. Tonight, we are presenting Actions 2, 4, 5, and 6, which I will talk about later. 3 was on the table but has been temporarily delayed, and our parking analysis to increase public parking was completed in 2019. Work with King County Metro has not started. Any work with the Downtown Issaquah Association has not really started. There have been some changes there, and COVID has been in place. We are, as you heard tonight, implementing, in the process of implementing improvements that discourage cut-through traffic. And the funding and building of the remaining portion of Phase 1 of the Downtown Streetscape Plan is in progress. It's been designed, part of it has been constructed, and I think are awaiting some funding to complete the construction there. And that goes, the street trees are included in that as well. The other item that has been postponed and is no longer on the table tonight, to develop incentives reducing parking requirements for neighborhood-oriented commercial projects. Code revisions to expand the sidewalk use district were completed in 2019. Review of the Old Town boundaries cannot begin until after architectural standards have been adopted. Amending the streetscape plan to require lighting and utility poles has not started. And promoting sustainable building action plan strategies is ongoing. That is included in conversations. We encourage this green building, but it's not yet required. So last time we talked, council had two concerns, two primary concerns. One was increasing the impervious surface in the Cultural and Business District, or CBD, from 85% to 95%, and in multifamily high zone on East Sunset Way only, from 50% to 75% at the time. And under the circumstances, we were told that there shouldn't be issues with this, but things were postponed, and then our Public Works Director left, and you all asked us questions that we could no longer answer. So, right now, I believe, as you know, the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan is going through an update, and once that is complete, they are aware of these proposed amendments. And once that is complete, we will be able to go back and address your questions and concerns, and we will bring that back to you at a later date. And then, the other one was looking for incentives besides parking reductions for neighborhood-oriented businesses. And something else that you all had brought up was maybe a solution could be looking at these uses by type, rather than just they have 10 locations throughout the U.S. and less. So, you know, I thought that wasn't such a bad idea with the staff. So we're going to go back and look at this one again. This will require another public hearing with the Planning Policy Commission, so that'll take a little bit longer. Moving on to what is still on the table tonight. The first one, the action is to reduce heights to three stories in the Cultural and Business District and Multifamily High, East Sunset Way only, from, to three stories, and then to two stories in the single-family duplex zone. So currently, in the CBD, the base is 45 feet, the max is 65 feet. We are proposing to lower that to both the base and the max to 40 feet or three stories, whichever is lower. And MFH, it's very similar. The base is 40 feet, the max is 65 feet. Again, proposing to lower it to 40 feet or three stories, whichever is lower.
Kristen, MFH?
Yes.
Could you?
I apologize. Multifamily High, East Sunset Way only. So, in multifamily medium, we realized if we didn't make changes there, the height would be higher than in multifamily high. So in multifamily medium, in Old Town only, we are proposing the same thing that we're proposing for multifamily high, which is 40 feet or three stories, whichever is lower. The difference between those two zones right now, if we don't change the impervious, is that multifamily high, you can have up to 29 units per acre, and multifamily medium is 14.5 units per acre, so it is still less dense than the multifamily high. Single-family duplex, we are proposing, there was no max height. The base height was 30 feet, and people were concerned about three-story buildings that were coming in, so our proposal is to do 25 feet or two stories, whichever is lower. So immediate action four was to require ground floor commercial on Front Street. This came from the Vitality Task Force in 2015, trying to activate the ground floor a little bit more and not just have, if somebody puts in a residence, not have just a lobby on the first floor, or to, you know, maybe to prevent some offices from coming in, although this would still allow offices. So that's what we're doing, is requiring properties on Front Street within the CBD to have ground floor commercial. Next action was to allow small-scale retail on East Sunset Way only. So the amendment is to allow small-scale standalone retail, not to exceed 4,000 square feet. And yes, there are currently very many businesses on East Sunset Way that are there, but they have mostly been grandfathered in, so they were there prior to the amendments, the code that is there now. Next action is to remove, so no one, well, at least residents, we, don't want to see additional density above what's allowed through the code. So, the proposal is to remove transfer of development rights, receiving sites from Old Town, and these are located in the Cultural and Business District, Multifamily Medium District Zone, and Multifamily High Zone. And so we're just proposing to remove all references to receiving sites in the code as well as on the map. I apologize somehow, the wrong map wound up there. Apologize. One additional proposed amendment that we have is to expand the boundaries of the parking exceptions. And the parking exceptions say that if you are going to do a change of use, that you don't have to change your parking, you don't have to increase your parking, and if you expand the property, less than 10% than what it already is. So it was a really strange shape that was called Downtown Issaquah, and it was adopted in 1986 as part of the LID that was in place, and it seemed a little dated to us, and being that the task force...
Kristen?
Yes.
LID?
See, I knew you'd ask me that. Local Improvement District. I still have Houston in my head, where it's a levy improvement district, but this is a local improvement district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was adopted in 1986. That has since sunsetted, and we thought that was a little dated, and particularly since we would like to get more commercial on East Sunset Way, which was not included in the previous boundaries. So that's what's on the table tonight. There are options to approve the proposed amendments as adopted, to change some of the proposed amendments, or to not approve all or some of the amendments. That's what's on the table. And our recommendation is tonight is to approve an ordinance implementing certain goals, policies, and actions in the Old Town Subarea Plan. And that is my presentation, so open to questions.
Thank you, Kristen. Before we go to questions, I'm going to give Council President Hunt an opportunity to share any email correspondence that the council may have received on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive an email specific to this item within the last week, and generally, this resident felt that council, generally, this resident recommended that council not proceed with these amendments, either reject them, return them for further consideration, or modify substantially. This resident was concerned about, concerned about that this should go to the newly-to-be-formed Issaquah Memorial Committee, specifically about the impervious surface item, also concern about flooding with the impervious changes, and was not in favor of the parking reductions that would be, that are potentially recommended for encouraging businesses, and was overall concerned about the amendments.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. We'll move into questions and comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Kristen, just clarifying question. It sounds like what I'm hearing is the proposed amendment that the staff is presenting tonight does not include action, immediate action number three regarding impervious surfaces, and does not include immediate action number 15 regarding parking reductions for those neighborhood-oriented businesses. So everything except for those that was in your presentation is what is proposed tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I have three questions. First is a quick one. What's the timeline for planning policy for having a hearing on narrowing the types of neighborhood businesses we want to incentivize that we mentioned?
This is Kristen Leeson. I don't know. With COVID in place, happening, I don't know what our schedule looks like.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Hall. We also, as a city, have a staffing resource issue and currently have a .65 employee to do all of the city's long-range planning. So we have some work to sort out how we're going to fit back all of the things that we're working on, but that's a great question. Did you have another question?
I do, and thank you for all your work, by the way. Yeah, two other questions. What is, I need a little bit more information about what removal of receiving sites in Old Town really means. Can you walk me through what the consequence of removing all references to receiving type means?
Absolutely. Yes, this is Kristen Leeson, and absolutely, and I apologize, I don't know, I have the wrong map. It's up there. I'll explain to you, transfer of development rights briefly. Transfer of development rights allow, the city has identified properties with significant critical areas on their site, and the city has identified areas where we would like growth to occur. And this was a while back, this was around 2003 or so. And what happens is, the area where they want growth to go, a property owner there can actually buy the development rights from the sending sites to go onto his receiving site. What that does is increase, so if the max height is currently 40 feet, this could actually increase the height. It could make the development go over 40 feet, or it could increase the impervious on that site, depending on how many rights they purchase. There are heights and square footages associated with each of the sending site amounts. So this then says, no, we don't want more development to go into Old Town. Remove those receiving sites so that more development that's allowed by code cannot go there.
Kristen, could you also identify areas in Issaquah that can still receive additional density?
Yes. There are, Central Issaquah has most of the receiving sites that are left. There were some amendments a few years ago, but I believe that some are still allowed in the Issaquah Highlands, and perhaps one or two sites in Talis. Not as many as there used to be, though.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Hall, did you have an additional question?
I did, Mayor Polly. Thank you. This is Zach Hall again. Thank you very much on that. Now I have a better understanding of what the community's thinking about that. My last question, last question slash comment is kind of umbrella for this thing in response to something you said right at the very beginning, in that, you know, you wanted to engage with council on how each neighborhood should grow, you know, as we're trying to meet city growth in the future. And I would also think that engaging with HOAs early on in neighborhood organizations is a really good idea to say, hey, how do you think you should grow? And how, because then you have built in, you know, that unique character and charm of each neighborhood. They're always thinking about it, and they know it best because they live there. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Going back over to my list, I believe Councilmember Marks is up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We don't actually have, we don't have a motion in front of us, right? Yes?
You are just doing Q&amp;A on the presentation itself. If you'd like to make a motion, you are the last person in line with a question, but we have not gotten that far yet.
No, then I'll hold my comment until there's a motion in front of us. Thank you.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. Looking into the chat box, I can see that there is some draft language in there. I am not seeing any other questions or questions at this time. Would anyone care to make a motion? I take that back. There is a question. Council President Hunt?
I do have a question for the clerks. This is Council President Hunt. So I would think that if council were to consider a motion to postpone, then that should go after the motion to adopt the ordinance. That shouldn't be at standard. That shouldn't be a standalone motion. Is that correct?
It can go either way. You can, if you prefer to refer the AB in its entirety, maybe that. If someone wishes to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented or as amended, and then apply a second motion that would postpone, it would be postponing the ordinance at that moment.
Does that help Council President Hunt?
Yes, it does. I'll, I'll see if other council members would like to make a motion before I make a motion.
Okay, I'm looking in the chat box to see if there is somebody who would make a Councilmember Goodman?
Sure, thanks. Councilmember Goodman here. Is the proposed motion that's in the agenda bill, the one on top here, I think, move to adopt ordinance number 2911, adopting by reference to amendment to the Issaquah Municipal Code relating to the Old Town SubArea, including amendments modifying standards for multifamily high, East Sunset Way only, multifamily medium, Old Town only, cultural business district, and single-family duplex zones, Old Town parking provisions, transfer of development rights, and the table of permitted uses.
Is there a second? Councilmember Walsh?
Yes, this is Councilmember Walsh. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, just briefly, that it seems to me that this was summed up pretty well in the comments by Kristin Leeson about how many years this goes back, and that the, the action that we're asked to adopt tonight is consistent with the actions in this Old Town SubArea Plan, which was put together after input, community input from a task force. And that, I mean, that's why I'm proposing, that's why I made the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, would you like to speak to it before I move on to Councilmember Merz?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I'll say ditto.
Good and sweet. We're going right to Councilmember Merz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Merz. Boy, oh, boy, do I miss land and shore at this moment. This is the kind of topic that would have generated, I don't know, three, four, five land and shore meetings as we delved into it, and as if we, as we also heard from folks in the community and businesses, there is a lot in this. And it may well be that it reflects the subarea plan, but just to, just to pick a couple of them that are big complicated issues, I think there's a decent number of developments in the SFD area that have gone up recently that have been more than two stories. So I think the market has an interest in more than two stories. And so I'm very nervous when there's been an established interest and it increases density. I'm very nervous about short-circuiting that thing that's already occurring in the, in that region. And then Councilmember Hall's question about TDR receiving sites, that could have had its own entire land and shore meeting about the current status of receiving sites, and the folks that hold TDRs would come and talk to us about what the market looks like, and how TDRs were set up, and whether this would be fair or not. So, you know, I don't, I'm just super uncomfortable. I'm going to, I'm going to vote no tonight, just because this is the kind of issue, I think, that was my big, one of my biggest concerns when we got rid of subcommittees. I think this is the sort of thing that land and shore did very well, and I think two hours into a meeting on a month where we've had so many huge issues in front of us, I am uncomfortable making large decisions without more, without more debate. Thank you.
Thanks. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I am going to make a motion, an amendment. I move to postpone AB 7788, Old Town Land Use Code amendments to allow for additional consideration and recommendations to address Old Town SubArea Plan goals identified in community engagement and in the immediate actions list, returning to the city council on or before a date to be determined by the administration.
Is there a second? Councilmember DeMichele? You have to come off of mute. Also would like to clarify that the postponement is of the ordinance, not of the agenda bill.
Thank you. I second, I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Council President Hunt, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. I am opposed to adopting this ordinance this evening for two main reasons, and that's why I'm recommending that we postpone, because I think that with additional understanding, perhaps, and more thoroughness, I could support something, but I do not at all support it in its current form. My first main reason why I'm opposed this evening is because I think that this is incomplete. It does seem to be a subset that was selected from items that council discussed previously. The items that council had questions about when we discussed this previously were removed and will be postponed to a date that's not certain, and then the items that council did not, I guess, have as much discussion are the ones that are going forward. I, like Councilmember Merz, I feel like this could have been vetted more thoroughly in a small group had we had land and shore, or had we had those discussions. But selecting a subset is, I think, not a good practice when we have a whole plan in place, and I, I'm not supportive of moving forward with only a few items. I, I also, my second main reason is for being opposed is that I don't see that this is backed up by the, the information that's presented in the agenda bill. I think that the information that was presented in the preamble by Kristin did help, but that isn't in our, that should really be with the agenda bill and should be supportive documentation. And then when I looked at the survey that we did, which had, I think, 477 respondents, so a lot of community engagement, lowering building heights from three to two stories had 44%. So less than half of the respondents supported that change. So I don't know how low it would have to be that we would continue to support that change, but it being less than half seems, seems confusing, especially when we did have so much community engagement on this item. And then I also noticed that almost as much support for that was for increasing the minimum green space per lot, and that seems to be at odds with the increasing impervious surface, which we will be considering again later. And then there's also a item on the, in the survey that has more support than reducing the building height from three to two stories, which is to not allow lots to be consolidated, to allow bigger buildings, and that is not one of the items that's recommended for council's adoption this evening. So I, I basically don't think that the changes that are recommended are complete. I don't see affordability considerations here. I think bigger buildings, or taller buildings can often, or not having very restrictive heights can often lead to more affordable buildings and more energy-efficient buildings, and I think we should have considered that, and I don't see any consideration of that here. I also don't see any consideration of sustainability, really. There's a mention of the sustainability plan, but not the actions to back that up. And then also, lastly, in audience comments, there was a comment made about being more specific about, you know, where the rules apply. The comment was made for impervious surfaces, but I think generally we just need a better, I think we do need to be more specific about where these items apply and why it's backed up by the community engagement if we're, if we're cherry-picking, for lack of a better word, items from this plan. And then last thing I'll mention is that in the word cloud that came out of the survey, affordable came out really big. So it wasn't really asked about, but people wrote that in their answers. And I, you know, we hear that over and over and over, and I would like to see us take that into consideration, especially now. I think we really need to think more about how our land use changes affect affordability. And I, again, I didn't see that this evening.
Council President Hunt, I have a question from the clerk about the returning date of the postponement.
Okay.
So does, I'll go to the city clerk. Does that need to be included in the motion?
My apologies. Thank you. Yes, I was wanting to know when the returning date would be, on or before.
I had hoped to, so I was going to ask the same question as Councilmember Hall about when we would hear back from planning policy on the next steps, but since we didn't have a date, I would like to have input from the administration if I'm going to make a recommendation there.
I think at this point I'll go back to Kristin Leeson. So in order to complete the items that require other actions, what would be the return date?
So if they're all coming back at the same time, I know that the storm and surface water plan is being updated now. Staff was asked to provide comments by July 9th, so I need to check back with them, see what the comments were, and see what the proposed date for that completion might be. We can answer those questions. I can check in and find out. But I don't have a date today.
The planning policy piece, parts being referred back to planning policy would be, actually, Kristin, if it's okay with you, I'm going to get the city administrator to provide some additional comments as well. Thank you. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. One of the reasons we brought these issues before you is that we have looked through the calendar between now and Thanksgiving, and we saw this as the one and only opportunity we thought would make sense to do this. So our guess would be that this could come back after Thanksgiving, maybe at a meeting in December or in January. That's a long time from now, and we recognize that, but as we look at the other items before the city council, unless the council is committed to meeting, you know, twice a week, several times during the months of October and November, I don't know that we'll be ready to do that before the beginning of next year.
City Administrator Bob Kowits, does that take into account our current planning resources as well?
Absolutely.
Which means?
Which means we have whatever Kristin's current workload is, which is a little, about three-quarter time. We do not have any additional resources. We have cut because of the COVID-19 crisis, planning staff significantly in order to balance our budget. And so unless the council is willing to allocate additional resources to get some of this work done again, I don't suspect this could come back before December 1st, January 1st.
Thank you. I have a comment from the city clerk on the motion, followed by a comment from the Director of Development Services, Mr. Niven. Tina, you're up first.
Hi, thank you. Clerk Agar speaking. Just wanted to clarify that a date certain is what we're aiming for, otherwise it's a postponement indefinitely. So just a point of clarification.
Oh, thank you. And Director Niven?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Keith Niven, Director of Community Planning and Development. So I think the discussion about timing is complicated because I don't think we know what scope of work the council is contemplating. The ordinance before you this evening is a specific implementation of a plan that you recently adopted for Old Town. All of the items are identified on the immediate action list. If there's a change to those implementing actions, I think it would require us going back and updating the Old Town SubArea Plan to reflect those changes. That work item would be, I think, longer than the next couple months, and possibly into next year, as City Administrator Bob Kowits mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Director Niven. We have a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, and I think part of my question was what Director Niven just talked about. I just want to make sure that I understand here and that we're all on the same page. So my understanding is that the subset that we're talking about are specific actions, immediate actions that are listed in the Old Town SubArea Plan that the council adopted, and that the immediate, that the entire plan, including all of those actions, were, as it talks about in the agenda bill, were vetted with the task force, four open houses, six PPC meetings, six council land and shore committee meetings, and then the survey. And so I guess I'm a little bit confused about what it is that is offensive or not acceptable about a subset. I, and as I'm looking at the subarea plan, you know, the, I mean, these are just specific actions that implement what the subarea plan calls for. So I guess I'm just a little bit confused, and I'm wondering if the question, is the concern really now a disagreement, or, or is there, is there, you know, not liking the subarea plan? Because that's different from implementation, because if we go back and we do things that are inconsistent with the subarea plan, then, you know, we need to change the subarea plan first, that I'm thinking. So I guess I'm just a little bit confused about why we would postpone adopting actions that are in a plan that we adopted, that don't have any question about what those items, what we're being asked to approve tonight. So specifically, it says in the plan, code revisions to reduce heights to three stories in CBD, three stories in MFH, two stories in SFD. I mean, it seems, these are just code revisions, so I'm a little bit confused about.
Is that, is that a comment or a question for the motion maker in the second?
Yeah, it's a question for the folks who are thinking about supporting the motion to postpone. I'm just trying to understand, why would postpone specific implementation of specific actions that have already been completely vetted? So is it really that we don't like the plan, or are we just, I just, I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you. So I, this Council President Hunt, I will respond with my answer. So I think that by selecting this subset, first of all, the plan has been, I think that this plan update, it's been something like 20 years, is that right, since the update? Mayor Polly said yes.
Yeah, sorry. It has been 20 years since the subarea plan has been updated, correct?
No, no, no. No, we, the subarea plan was just adopted. An update to the subarea plan was just adopted, right, in November?
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify. There was an Old Town SubArea Plan, and there was a five- to seven-year process of community engagement to review and get input, to understand what concerns the neighborhood had, and to update the plan that was originally written probably 22-ish plus years ago. And so two years ago, the council received the final product of that, which was the Old Town Issaquah SubArea Plan update and adopted it. Is that clarified?
Yeah, so I guess why I raise this is we, we often adopt plans, and then when we get to the code part, because of the length of time, and I think, and other factors, but we often make refinements to the items in the plan. And I also think that by selecting certain items, we're de facto prioritizing those items in a in a plan that has a bunch of other items, which are not being the ones that are going forward this evening. So I would like to see more, so I'm postponing it because I would like those code amendments that do reflect an adopted plan to be better vetted against the data and that information to be presented. We did not receive a lot of public engagement on this right now because of obvious reasons. I think everybody has, there are so many other challenges happening right now. But we have received a lot of community engagement in the past, and I would like to see, as we're adopting the code changes to address this, that we continue to vet those. I'm also just frankly concerned that the items that council asks questions about, because those have to go after, so the impervious surface having to go after the shoreline master plan, those ones are the ones that are being pushed off, and then these other ones are proceeding right now. I think that we should continue to try to look at this holistically and implement, implement a plan that makes sense as completely as possible. And that does not seem to be the case with this, in my opinion.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I think the clerk wants to provide some clarifying information on the motion. City clerk?
Thank you. Clerk Eggers speaking. So to be clear, the motion on the floor without a specific returning date basically kills the item. If you want to postpone with a certain returning date, such as December 31, 2020, or returning on or before February, or whatever that date is, the item would then return.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Thank you.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Question for the clerks. So should I, do I have to make an amendment, or can I just change my motion to insert a date?
I guess I would ask the attorney if he would like to weigh in on that. I would think that we have a motion that I'm uncertain as to what motion is on the floor. So if you can clarify that, and the second can concur, we can proceed.
Okay. I will clarify the motion then, if there's no objection. So I will clarify that the motion is to move to postpone AB 7788 Old Town Land Use Code Amendments to allow for additional consideration and recommendations to address Old Town Subarea Plan goals identified in community engagement and in the immediate actions list returning to the city council on or before December 31, 2020.
Second, Councilmember DeMichele?
I second.
Great. And Councilmember DeMichele, you have a comment?
Yes, I seconded this motion, and I agree with many of the rationales that Council President Hunt put forward. There were two other things that I took into consideration. I did take to heart the comment we received this afternoon via email from Steve Ferreira regarding the fact that we do, you know, we are in the process of getting an environmental council or board and that it would be excellent for them to review this work as one of their first items. So that, I thought, was a really good comment. The other thing is, I will quote myself from a week ago and say, you know, "We're in a whole new world here, and we said very clearly that we were going to take some actions. And we said that we would look at all of our policies from an equity, through an equity lens. And I think that we should take a pause here and do that." That was the promise we made to the public, that we were going to look at everything through an equity lens. And this has not been vetted through an equity lens. So for those two reasons, and many of the things that Council President Hunt put forward, I am supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a comment from City Administrator Bob Kowits, and then a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to go back to Mr. Niven's comment because I think the council is really approaching an entirely different topic. And that is, I'm hearing that perhaps the Subarea Plan itself needs to be revisited. Again, what these ordinances are doing is implementing the Subarea Plan. You know, we can nibble around the edges, we can have additional public comment, but ultimately, we are implementing that Subarea Plan. If there is an interest in reviewing with an equity lens, if there's an interest in getting additional comment, the changes that we're seeing with COVID process, then perhaps a more appropriate motion would be to stop this process entirely and then come back to you what would make sense to completely revisit this plan. And that was already a multi-year process. Revisiting the plan may be a multi-year process. But we would not want to spend six more months working on ordinances to implement a plan if there are fundamental disagreements with that Subarea Plan. So Madam Mayor, I'm not sure what your direction might be, but it sounds like the council has questions about the plan that was multiple years in making. And if that's the case, then perhaps a different direction, a different motion may be in order.
That's true. I completely agree with your sayings, City Administrator. And I'll have to be honest, I'm pretty disappointed that we would actually be having, talking about this tonight and discounting five to seven years' worth of community work and engagement. But it is the council's pleasure to do that and put away the Subarea Plan, and we'll go back to square one, and we'll go back out to the community and restart. So it's absolutely possible, and I think you're right, I think you've nailed it, that that is the question that's being asked tonight. Deputy Council President Ray, followed by Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. I was going to ask a question about whether or not we were debating the actions that are proposed or whether or not the Subarea Plan was correct. So I'll ask a different question. And it is, are the actions that we've identified here, do those, the intent of those is to implement the specifics that came out of the Subarea Plan? Is that a correct statement?
This is Kristin Leeson. Yes, when we looked at the immediate actions, those actions that we selected were all of the code, everything that would be, everything that would require a code amendment, we tried to bundle together to bring forward to council at once.
Yeah, and then there are some things that are in the Subarea Plan that, Kristin, you talked about this, that we haven't gotten to yet. And so there's still things, there's still work to do, and there's still more code changes needed to implement the rest of the Subarea Plan.
Correct. Most of the code changes are under immediate actions and are what we are talking about tonight, except for those two that have been postponed.
But there are some additional code changes that are still forthcoming.
I believe so, yes. I'd have to double check, but yes.
So I guess I would be curious to know from my colleagues if we think that these proposed actions and changes to code don't deliver on the vision of the Subarea Plan. And if that's the case, then we need to figure out why that is and send it back and have them come back. Or if the problem is the Subarea Plan isn't really aligned to our needs, and then that's a different question. So I think, I need some guidance on what the objection to the current ordinance is. Is it because it's not delivering what we think the Subarea Plan should include? Because the Subarea, the ordinance doesn't reflect what's been written? Or do we need to go back and revisit the Subarea Plan?
Councilmember Hunt, or Councilmember DeMichele?
This is Councilmember Hunt. I made the motion, which is to bring back, which is to revisit the immediate actions list and bring back actions after further consideration in a more complete form. So there has been a discussion about revisiting the Subarea Plan, but that's not the motion that's currently on the table. So I'll speak to the motion. There's actions there, for example, to align with our sustainable building plan. And our sustainable building plan has a bunch of actions that we also have not implemented. So the issue, I think, is that we are choosing specific, for me, the issue is that we're choosing specific ones and potentially acting on those in a vacuum. And we, I do not think that the information that was presented this evening in our packet supports those, and I think we could do a better job. And then the other thing is, I would like to comment on the mayor's comment about discounting community engagement. And I don't think that's, that is not at all my intent. I looked very closely at our last community engagement, and I, for instance, brought forward a number of statistics from our online survey that I think are important. I'm not discounting the years of community engagement that went into this. I would rather say that I want to be considerate of the entirety of the work, and I don't think that that's what we're doing this evening. And I, I'm not discounting the community engagement. That's not my intent.
Councilmember Ray?
So my, I guess the root of my question is, do we not like the way that this ordinance implements the Subarea Plan? Or do we not like the Subarea Plan? Or do we think that we should do all the elements of the Subarea Plan at the same time, and we don't want to piecemeal it in? So either there are three, and I'm trying to figure out what we would, what we're trying to accomplish by delaying taking action on this. That's really where, I'm trying to understand what the outcome of that will be.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you. So I would say that the action I would like out of this is to have it returned to council with a more complete, or more, maybe not complete, but a more balanced approach to the actions list for our consideration so that we can proceed in enacting the Subarea Plan, but also seeing how the actions that we're taking address the core goals of that plan and the core goals that came out of that community engagement. I also, I feel that this, as was mentioned by City Administrator Bob Kowits, there was an ability to put this item on the agenda this evening, and then there isn't availability for a while. But that isn't, in my opinion, a good reason to take action this evening.
Council, Deputy Council President Ray?
No, I think there's some others who'd like to comment, so I'm happy to hold on for a bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I think this is kind of what happens when it takes a long time to go through a planning process, and then the planning process and the code implementation get a little bit separated out between the two steps. Because we, as a council, as a, maybe it was the previous council, I don't remember, had agreed upon the Old Town Subarea Plan, and that included these actions. And so as much as I appreciate the idea of maybe we don't like which actions have been chosen to be implemented in a first round of code revisions, I also appreciate that the staff recognized that there was an ongoing issue with impervious surface and actually pulled that out of this list. So I think this list is responsive to the community and is long overdue from when a plan was created and adopted. And I don't want to wait longer to implement code that our community has told us that they want. Because then we end up running the risk of something gets developed that, because the code allows it, and the community comes back to us and says, "Well, we told you that this was going to happen three, four years ago. Why haven't you fixed this by now?" And I think that sits on us, and especially in a time when we have approved limited staff to let this continue on for, potentially an indefinite period of time, to get more community feedback, we're going back to the plan. I think that would be irresponsible of us at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I'm going to go to staff for a second. It looks like Director Niven would like to add some comments, and then I'll be coming back to Councilmember Hall. Mr. Niven?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keith Niven, Director of Community Planning and Development. So I just wanted to provide some context for the plan. And part of the conversation going through the land and shore committee of the city council was an ask by the committee for us to draft a very different kind of plan. The criticism of the old Old Town Plan, excuse me, for the multiple olds, was that most of the action items were very broadly written and hard to understand, and hard to understand if they were ever implemented. So what we did is we turned the implementation part of the plan into immediate actions, short-term actions, and longer-term actions. It's a 10-year implementation of the vision for the plan where we prioritized what we wanted to have happen in the next two years, so 2019, 2020. Now, obviously, the pandemic has caused a little bit of delay in our progress. But my understanding of the plan that the council adopted is there are already prioritized action items, and there was never an expectation from the city council that we would bring them all together at once. Because from a staffing standpoint, that's a huge lift. And so this was anticipated to be brought forward kind of incrementally to the council. And by the time we get to 2030, hopefully, we've implemented all of the action items from the plan. So I just wanted to provide that for the council.
Thank you, Director Niven. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I don't know, I don't know where I am quite yet, but I wanted to voice one thing that I was just thinking. You know, Councilmember Walsh just said something to the effect of, you know, "This is what the community has been asking of us, and we should move forward with that." But I don't, I'm not quite sure if this is what the community is asking. I mean, I was just looking at the Subarea Plan, and it seems like, you know, to Council President Hunt's point again, we're not discounting work that's already gone into this or community feedback that's already gone into this. But it seems like, at least for housing as one example, we've bumped into tension within the plan itself. I mean, one of the goals is to preserve residential neighborhoods by reducing allowable heights in the higher-density areas to maintain character. And that's kind of what some of this does. But then there's another goal, to increase housing types and retain and increase the supply of housing by implementing the Housing Strategy Work Plan. So it seems like we're doing one of them at the expense of another, to Councilmember Mart's points earlier too, about, you know, not wanting to rule out another level because that could increase affordability within our broader community. So I don't really know where I am, but I wanted to mention, I think we've run into a problem.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Niven for the comments because I think that they did help clarify some things. And so I also wanted to in turn clarify, I don't, I also don't expect the entire list and the entire implementation to come forward at once. I would ask that there be a more balanced approach. As Councilmember Hall just was talking about, there's affordability goals, and there's also character goals. And right now, it doesn't, it doesn't seem that that is what we're going forward with. We're going forward with things that we didn't ask questions about when this came to council last time, which I, it doesn't seem like a balanced first step to me that implementing the plan and the goals of the plan. The other thing is, there are some goals that still are not, sorry, there are some immediate actions that are still not very specific. One is the sustainable building plan. And so it would be kind of hard, as it is, to know if we've implemented that or not. know if we've implemented that or not, and some are more specific. So there, there's always, I think, room for council to have discussions around the action items, both when we adopt the plan, but also when we adopt the code. It's just because we adopt the plan, I don't think that that means we have to adopt, I think we can, we can think about, we can take thoughtful measures in terms of how we adopt that plan after we adopt, or how we implement the plan after we adopt it. Thanks.
Councilmember DeMichelle?
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichelle, and I just want to clarify too, and thank everybody for the comments that have been made. I just wanted to clarify that I, my intention here is not to overturn the subarea plan or anything like that. We have a very discreet, to me, this is the way I'm looking at it, we have a discreet list of items here, that, and we are in a new place here. And I know that we're, I know it's important to keep marching forward to implement things, but I do think that we are in a place where the community and the world is basically saying, we've got to pause, we've got to think about what we're doing. And so the fact that we have a very discreet list of a few items, that to me is an advantage that, here, we're asking to get a little bit more information, we're asking this to be relooked at one more time, and can you come back to us with that little bit more of information with that, with that second look through a different lens, if it's the equity lens? And I do not want to discount the work that's being done by the staff. I know that, I know that's not a little bit of work, but I think that to be comfortable with what we're passing, that we are asking that it be reviewed one more time. So that is, that was the intent of what I am saying, and I'm sorry that it looks as though we're trying to overturn, you know, the whole plan. That is not my intent. I'm just looking at these items that are in front of us and saying, I would like these looked at one more time.
Deputy Council President Ray, followed by Deputy, or sorry, by Councilmember Mart?
No, I'm just trying, I'm really wrestling with this, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what we, what the benefit we get if we push this thing out until the end of the year. What would change, and why would we think that it'll be better or different? So I know that we talked about a more balanced approach. So is what I'm hearing, that the ordinance that we have developed doesn't fully reflect our thinking about how best to implement the specifics in the subarea plan, and that we need to do some work? Because I think if we're giving them, they're, we're directing the administration to go back and try again, we're also missing an element here, which is, they, they did the best that they thought they could with what they knew. So if we're going to send the administration back to do this again, we need to form an ad hoc committee to provide some guidance, or some other mechanism to provide guidance, because I don't know why I would see this changing dramatically if we just say, go try again, and then I feel like we're sitting on a fetch a rock exercise, and I don't think that's fair.
Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a tough one. I hear Councilmember Goodman, and I hear the administration and the work that went into this, but I'll, I will also say that two years is a long time. It's been 18 months, 20 months, something like that, since we voted on this. Only four of the seven council members are the same. Housing prices have jumped. What looked to be a pretty sure thing for transit ordinance development is now much more in question. Many of us have kids that are living at home with limited prospects on where they're going to live, and so some of these things feel a little different to me. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm ready to say throughout seven years of revisions, but certain things feel different. The SFD going to two stories feels different than it did two years ago. And I understand why that's frustrating. I think you're, what you're hearing is different people on the council at this moment aren't ready to say yes this evening, perhaps for different reasons. I would like to think about it more. I, I think maybe my reaction earlier was a little hasty, and I certainly don't want to, like I said, denigrate all the work that's been done, but I stand by the idea that some of these things, I think, feel different than they did two years ago. So as frustrating as that may be, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I think that Councilmember Walsh said it really, really well, and...
Councilmember Goodman, you accidentally hit your mute button.
I think Councilmember Walsh said it really well. I don't think, how many times we say we're not intending to open the plan, to me, that feels exactly like what the undercurrent is, and there has been a lot of community input, and I see, I actually don't see any reason for not implementing the items that have been recommended to be implemented tonight. I just really do fail to see the reason. There's still so much more work to do on this plan. I completely disagree, having been on the council now for nine, going on 10 years, that we often, that code changes, we look at code changes to make sure that they're consistent with plans that we've adopted. This is completely consistent with a plan that was completely put together by the community. And we, I don't understand what balanced approach means. We can't do everything at one time. In a perfect world, I suppose, all the dominos would fall in exactly the same way, exactly the way we lined them up, and that is completely impossible. So, and in terms of the core goals, I don't know what we mean by that. We have, all the actions are laid out, there's dozens of them, and I really, I really honestly fail to see why we would delay a few items that have come forward in black and white in the plan. If there was one thing that I think that we should have had in the agenda bill tonight that I certainly don't have, and that when I printed out, it would have been a copy of the subarea plan. Maybe there was a link to it, I just printed it out, and maybe there was a link to it. But we could have held them side by side and seen that says, we'll do this, and this is what we're doing. So I really honestly don't see a reason to delay these few things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Not seeing that anyone else is signed up for comments right now. I just want to check back in with the administration, in particular, City Clerk and its City Administrator. I'm hearing two different things here tonight. I'm hearing we have to rethink things, and I'm hearing we just need to push something out, and have you come back and bring it back, examine through another lens. They're very, very different things. I'm not sure I have a very clear understanding at all of what the council is talking about right now. I'm hearing you need to take these back and run it through an equity lens. You may need to take it back and see how it compares to a housing affordability. I'm not sure you're going to get a different outcome, and so I'm really baffled about what we're doing here. We don't have other lenses to put it through. These are just the actual, specific actions that were in the plan, that had, there were problems that the Old Town neighborhood wanted resolved, there was a plan adopted with actions to do it, and you are basically just adopting code. If what you want us to do is come back with more explanation of why you should adopt the ordinance as it is, you're going to have to be very specific about what it is that you want done, because I am extremely confused if that's the intent. If the intent is to say, I no longer believe that the subarea plan adopted two years ago is reflective of our community values, which is what Deputy Council President Ray is saying, then say that. Then say that. But I fear that what you're doing is sending us back to the administration to do something very vague, that will come back in December and be very disappointing, and it will tell you, three stories to two, 65 feet to 40. And so I'm not sure anybody's going to be satisfied with that we accomplished anything of benefit during that time. So if I could get some clarity of what it would be that you would be specifically asking us to do, then it might make more sense. But I'm really confused right now. If it is, if it is a different time in a different place, then the plan is gone. Administrator Bob Kowitz?
You know, let me just speak to Councilmember DeMichelle's concern about the equity lens, because I think that's a really important issue, and certainly is one that wasn't on the table during the community's discussions about this. I think we're going to spend a lot of time talking about equity lenses, and I think that, you know, the subarea plan, all of the land use planning, central Issaquah, oh my goodness, if you want to, if you want to start talking about how we're going to have to think about plans in different ways, that's when we're going to have to think about different ways with an equity lens. You know, my recommendation to the council is you have so many years of community input in this, you're, you know, the ordinance before you is implementing that, you know, I think we need to let that continue to move forward, with the recognition that we've got lots and lots of land use work ahead of us as a community. And we can't hold up everything that has been done, and be able to look back now, six months from now, a year from now, and try to second-guess all of that. I think we have to, you know, continue to march forward. Again, we're implementing a plan. I think that makes sense, and the issues of an equity lens are something that we're going to be with, with us for a while. So, Madam Mayor, I would encourage the council to move forward with these ordinances, understanding that over the last several months, our list of to-dos is growing longer almost by the week, and I think a reflection on overall land use planning is important. But I don't want that to be at the expense of the individuals who've spent years and years and years working on this subarea plan, and thinking that once it was adopted, then the council had the stewardship to move forward to implement it with the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Bob Kowitz. So I am not seeing any more comments in the chat box. So the motion, if I could have the City Clerk read back the motion that's on the floor?
Thank you. Clerk Eggers speaking. The motion on the floor is to postpone the ordinance to allow for additional consideration and recommendations to address Old Town Subarea Plan goals identified in community engagement and in the immediate actions list, returning to the City Council on or before December 31, 2020.
Thank you. And, so looking over, it looks like the conversation in the chat box is done. So could the City Clerk please do a roll call vote?
Thank you, yes. Councilmember DeMichelle?
I have to be the first. I will say that I'm torn now. I will vote nay on that one.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Nay.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Nay.
Thank you. I have that as a three to four vote. The motion failed. Would anybody care to, I have to back myself up. Did we already have another motion on the table? We did.
We do.
Oh, sorry, City Clerk.
You have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2911.
Is there any additional discussion, conversation, comments, or questions on the motion to adopt ordinance 2911? And, I'm scrolling down to see, Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I want to clarify why I'm going to vote for the items, because I also voted for the amendment to postpone. So like I said, I am not opposed to implementing the plan. I am, though, it, we aren't adopting anything about affordability this evening. We aren't adopting, at least I don't see anything about affordability, I don't see anything about sustainability. Those are things that we hear from the community all the time. If you, if we talk about respecting the community engagement, I don't know why, this does not feel strategic to me. This does not feel like an implementation that's strategic. I understand that we need to proceed with implementation of plans. I take to heart all the concerns of council, and I take to heart that many years went into making the plan, but again, implementation is one thing. In this case, it's several years away from the adoption of the plan. We have a lot of work to do on a lot of, a lot of things, but I, we need to, I think, be strategic in how we implement our plans.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Seeing none in the chat box, I will go up and reread the motion. The motion on the table is to move to adopt ordinance number 2911, adopting by reference amendments to the Isqo Municipal Code relating to the Old Town Subarea, including amendments modifying standards for multifamily high, East Sunset Way only, multifamily medium, Old Town only, cultural business district, and single-family duplex zones, Old Town parking provisions, transfer of development rights, and the table of permitted uses. And I will ask the Clerk to do a roll call vote.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, there is a comment. I just wanted to...
Oh, sorry? Yes, thank you very much. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Yeah, if that's okay. This is, this is Zach Hall. I just also wanted to say I'll be supporting the final motion too, but for a different reason. I think my main concern, looking at this, is affordability, and looking at single-family dwelling, the proposed limit to two stories, I thought, got rid of future potential for affordable housing options in Issaquah. But I think two stories, obviously still, there are still options, there are still housing types that are affordable that can play into that, and I think it's better than nothing.
Thank you, Council...
And to some extent, it honors, well, they're, sorry, sorry, Mayor Pauli, one more thing. It, to some extent, it honors the two goals in the Old Town Subarea Plan, which was, you know, to increase more affordable housing, and also to maintain the character and the scale of residential neighborhoods. But I don't see how it's honoring our Housing Strategy Work Plan. So those are my concerns, but I'll vote in favor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Just, again, I was very, very torn on that last vote. And one, one consideration is that we still need to put in place a definition for what an equity lens is, and some criteria for that, which will take more time. But I just want to say that I, I feel like we made a promise to the community, and I want to honor that promise, that we are going to continue to, we're not going to continue, we're going to start looking at things with that equity lens. So this is probably not the hill to die on, on that issue, but there will come that hill to die on, and I, I am willing to do that. I think that we have to seriously take into consideration that promise to the community. We said we were going to take actions, not just words, and that has got to mean something. And so I will vote yes on this motion, but I am not feeling great right now, and I will be coming back on this same issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. I'm going to vote no. I said 11 years ago that what was important to me was workforce housing and living wage job. That continues to be what's important to me. If I've made a mistake anywhere along this way with approving or voting for this measure two years ago, now more than ever, workforce housing is... two years ago, now more than ever, workforce housing is critical in our community. It touches almost every family in our community. And it sounds like this bill is going to, or this motion is going to move forward, but it sounds like this council has said loud and clear that there's a majority that cares about workforce housing. And for everybody who said they're torn on this, we need to find a way to express that in other public policy that's going to come before this council in the near future. So I'm still going to be a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark. Councilmember Goodman, followed by Council President Hunt.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Certainly, we can do better, but we have taken actions. And I think one of the, the, one of the questions that was posed to the administration this afternoon and answered was about affordable housing, that we do have a citywide affordable housing code that waives fees and certain things that, in order to incentivize affordable housing, there's a difference between affordable housing and housing that is less expensive than it is. It also is a very expensive endeavor to create affordable housing, as in the AMI-type housing. And so, um, we, it, it's not, it's not simple, and it's not inexpensive. And several members who have sat with me have experienced that and the decisions that we've wrestled with in order to create affordable housing. So I certainly don't disagree that we can, we can try to, you know, move the needle more. That I will be supporting this because we, because I've already said before, the multi-year effort, and we need to move forward, we got a lot of work to do on a lot of things, and a lot of them we've talked about tonight already. Thank you.
Last one signed up so far in the chat is Council President Hunt. If anybody else would like to speak after, please indicate in the chat box. Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I have also been very torn. I, I think, actually, after listening especially to Councilmember Mark, I think I am going to vote against the actions. And again, I'm not, I really want to be clear that I'm not discounting the, I'm not discounting the work that went into the subarea plan, but I do think that the implementation this evening is, is not strategic, and I, I am very concerned that it does not address some of the core things that we've heard about time and time again from the community in terms of affordability, maintaining naturally affordable housing that is there, and also the sustainability elements. So I think in the end, I will be voting against, and that is why.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman here. One last thing, and compared to the big issues we were talking about, this may not seem significant, but we did get a comment tonight from, or today, from Steve Ferrer regarding central business district, CBD, as opposed to cultural and, uh, business district. So our, our code, 1806-110, defines it as cultural and business district, and the Old Town Subarea Plan also says cultural and business district. So I'm unclear why we are now referring to this as the central business district. So maybe somebody can just answer that question.
I thought we did by email this afternoon, but I'll let Kristen Leeson weigh in.
Hi, so this is Kristen Leeson, and it is cultural and business district. I'm not sure where a typo occurred along the way, but it did, but it is clearly cultural and business district.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else signed up in the chat, but I will give it a few seconds. And city clerk, can you do the roll call vote?
Certainly. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Nay.
Councilmember Mark?
Nay.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That was five ayes and two nays. Thank you, city clerk. That passes. And we are moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is good of the order. And if you could please use the chat box to let me know if you have anything for good of the order, and I do believe Councilmember Hall does. So let's start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, this is Zach Hall. So I know it's late, and we just had a long conversation, and I said earlier that I would bring up something from Cascade Water, but here's a thought. What if, how would I bring it up at the next regular meeting, which is, Mayor Pauli, feel free to, if you'd rather have the conversation tonight, since you're the, the regular member, we can. But we have a regular council meeting. I have the planning calendar in front of me on July 20th, and two days later is the next board meeting. And so what Mayor Pauli and I were hoping to do is to say, hey, here's what our colleagues on, in Issaquah think about potential rate increases from Cascade. So how about I just wait till the next meeting?
I think that would be helpful. I also think, I know the slide deck from Cascade was fairly long, but I think in order to get the council's opinion, we may need to forward that on. And again, it's, uh, throughout this COVID crisis and this economic collapse that we're seeing, everybody's being asked to take a second look at rate increases. And I think that's the question that you want to pose to your fellow council members, is Cascade is going ahead with a rate increase that they already had scheduled and on the books, and there isn't any second look. So I think Councilmember Hall can share some information, and even though it's only two days before, if the council decides that they think this is a significant issue, then Councilmember Hall and I have some work to contact some other Cascade board members and, and say that we're going to bring forward a concern with it. So I think that would be appropriate. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, Councilmember Hall, did you have anything else for good of the order?
Uh, just to say, if no one has any objections, then I will, that's a great idea, Mayor Pauli. I'll forward the slide deck and also my, my notes on the presentation to the rest of, or maybe I'll send it to you and someone in your office could forward it.
That would be great. Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Uh, just for Councilmember, hi, this is Chris Ray, this is for Councilmember Hall. Just a clarifying question, so, and Mayor Pauli, are you looking for feedback on whether or not we are up for rate increases? Is that the gist of where we're going? Because if it were to take two weeks, we might as well have some time to think about it, too. So I just want to be clear on the questions you're asking.
Yeah, we'll try and get the information out to you in the next couple of days, and it's absolutely about where you stand on rate increases. Um, I had a couple of little items first, I know it'd been mentioned a little bit earlier, but I did want to say thank you to all of the staff that worked on putting together that first-ever Fourth of July brought-to-the-neighborhoods parade, and to say, you know, strongly support what Councilmember Ray said about, this is what we've always talked about doing, is going to where the people are. And so I think it was a huge success, and I know I was pretty excited after looking at that many smiling faces in a short period of time. It's been really tough. Also, I just wanted to make a comment about the council report outs that you did tonight. I think it's apparent to the public or anybody that's watching that the state is trying in a limited way to get back to business of governing in the region. You are starting to meet with your committees and your action groups again. But just like every other sector, we're coming back and we're going to look different. And all of the agencies you work with are in a similar boat to the city, and that is that there's a significant reduction in funding, which has meant a significant reduction in staff resources, which means all of our work plans and timelines are going to change and shift. And so while we're getting back to the business of governing, the new reality is that we just, we're just not the same kind of government, or the same kind of agency, or the same kind of board that we sat on before. So it's going to look very different. Does anybody else have anything for good of the order? Not seeing anything in the chat box. We are having some upcoming council meetings. There's a special city council meeting on Monday, July 13th, it's an executive session. There's a city council study session on Tuesday, July 14th. Potential agenda items at this point include the environmental and sustainability board discussion, the first performance measurement workshop. City council regular meeting from Monday, July 20th at 7:00 PM. The potential agenda items include an update on the dog park, update on the proposed dog park, a public hearing on interim zoning regulation. We're now going to move into an executive session, as earlier announced, there is an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, .140 per N4 per N A. This item is expected to last, I'm going to say 15 minutes, and we'll, if we need to extend it, we will. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. We will now recess into executive session at 10:21 PM. I ask the clerk to move anyone who's not part of the closed session to the...